Dr. Haas at 6:30.
All right, so good evening, everyone. I am going to go ahead and call the tonight's meeting of the Alamo County Public Schools Board to order. And in doing so, first, I would ask Ms. Carlson to read the certification of the closed meeting, please.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. I move that the board certified by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting where heard discussed are considered in the closed meeting. Bennett, my son is trying.
Second.
So can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Mr. Pass.
Okay, at this time, I will read the online meeting statement. This meeting of the Alamo County Public School Board is being held electronically pursuant to Virginia state law and Alamo County ordinance because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on Alamo County Public Schools website. Public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. At this time, I would ask us all to please observe a moment of silence. Welcome, everyone, to the organizational meeting of the Alamo County Public Schools Board. This is our first board meeting for 2021. It is good to see everyone here tonight, and I welcome everyone to the work of the school board for this school year. As the first order of business, as part of the organizational meeting, I'm going to begin by asking if any board member has a nomination for the role of Alamo County School Board Chair.
Yes, Dr. Haas, I do. It is my distinct honor and privilege to nominate and move that we elect Mr. Graham Page to be the Chair of the Albemarle County School Board for 2021. Mr. Page is a man who I respect, admire, and appreciate. He leads by example. He remains calm in all situations. He listens carefully to everyone, and he always strives to find creative solutions to problems that demand them. Mr. Page is a man of faith, which shows in his wide array of community involvement. He has done an outstanding job as Chair during the last six months after assuming the role unexpectedly. Mr. Page is a champion to all of our students, parents, teachers, and staff. He certainly earned the opportunity to continue his work. Is there a second?
I second. Everybody's second.
All right. Are there any other nominations for the Chair of Alamo County School Board?
Unanimous consent.
Okay, having, having no other nominations and the nomination as second of Mr. Page, at this time, I would call for a roll call vote.
I have unanimous consent.
I don't think we heard the first part of that, Dave.
I said I called for unanimous consent.
Do the, I'm not a pronunciant, Dave. Does that require a second, or?
No.
We just go?
If anybody objects, it's an objection, but.
Okay.
As the current Chair of the Alamo County School Board, I ask for a roll call vote.
That's fine.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes, and I want to say, Graham, you're awesome.
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Um, yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Humility almost took over at that.
All right, Mr. Page, it is my pleasure to turn the Alamo County School Board back over to you for your leadership and guidance, and I'm here to support you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for presiding, Dr. Haas. You did a wonderful job. And thanks to Mr. Alcarro for the nomination, and thanks to the board members for electing me as your Chair for this term. I really appreciate it, and I will be doing my very best job to live up to the expectations and to the description that Mr. Alcarro gave. So thank you once again for electing me as your Board Chair. Our next position was back vice chair. Do we have nominations for vice?
I do, Mr. Page. I nominate without reservation my colleague Katrina Carlson for her first full term as Vice Chair of the Alamo County School Board. Katrina is beginning her fourth year as school board member, and her experience as a teacher and a lawyer, as well as her ability to quickly get to the heart of matters, has been greatly appreciated by her fellow school board members. Her life experiences have also contributed significantly to the challenges we have had and continue to have in creating an environment where all of our students can flourish. I move that we accept.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any other nominations? It's been moved in second, rather, that we have Mrs. Katrina Carlson as Vice Chair. Mrs. Johnston, could you give a roll call vote for that motion?
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes, thank you, guys.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, so we have an awesome Vice Chair in position. Mrs. Carlson has done an outstanding job doing these last six months as our Vice Chair. So I'm really pleased to have her as our Vice Chair again during this term. We are now ready for our establishment of our meeting times and dates. Part of those were attached to the original agenda for this. And, Ms. Johnston, are you going to send out the rest?
You mean, you mean to pull the point the clerk as well?
Okay, yeah. Sorry about that. Okay, right, that was right there, nixed in my notes, so I really apologize. We need to appoint.
Move that we appoint Jennifer Johnston as the clerk.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved that we appoint Jennifer Johnston to continue as our school board clerk. Ms. Johnston, could you take a roll call, or is it a conflict of interest?
I can take your roll call for you. Who seconded it?
I did.
Ms. Alcarro. Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, so Ms. Johnston is again appointed as our school board clerk. She has been doing an outstanding job all along, so we know that she will continue to do that in her position, continuing from this date for the next year. All right, so now we are ready for the establishment of our meeting time, date, and place. So I know that part of that was sent out, attached to the first agenda. And, Johnson, did you have the rest of those dates?
I do. They should be all listed on the we pull it up for us. So here's our meeting calendar for 2021 into January of 2022. It includes the budget work sessions and joint meetings that we know of. Of course, there's always special meetings that can be scheduled and discipline meetings that can be scheduled as well, if needed.
All right, we see the dates for our board meetings. Could I have a motion to accept the proposed calendar?
I will move that we accept the proposed calendar.
I second.
Okay, was that you, Ms. Dr. Acuff?
Yep.
So it's been moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Dr. Acuff, that we accept the date shown as proposed on our school calendar for 2021, '22. Ms. Johnston, roll call, please.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Our calendar is accepted, as shown. We're now ready for our appointments to our various committees, starting with prep. I'm currently our rep on that board, but if anyone else would like to assume that, it's okay. And that's probably the best way for us to do it. So do we have a volunteer for the prep board? If not.
I.
All right, Ms. Carlson.
Oh, I unfortunately don't think I'll have the time to adequately do that, but I did want to just put in a plug and say, I did it in my first year, and it was really useful to kind of get a grasp on what's happening in the special education realm, and also build relationships with surrounding counties.
Yes, right, right.
Graham, you may want to just talk about the frequency of the meetings and the time of the meetings that might.
Yeah, the meetings usually, I think, once a month. I forget the exact day that those meetings are, but it's usually at around 10 or 11 o'clock, I think, in the morning currently for the meetings. And so lately, of course, they've all been Zoom, but there would always be an announcement being sent out as to when the meeting is going to be heard, or held, rather. So it'd only be one meeting per month ordinarily.
I'm currently the alternate on that board, and I could step up to be the primary.
Okay, all right, Ms. Lee has volunteered to be our prep representative from Alamo County Public Schools.
I will appoint Judy Lee as the prep representative from the Alamo County School Board.
Right.
Second.
Okay, we could do them one at a time, but it might save time if we do them all as sort of a blanket, if that's okay with the board. Any objections to doing them all together?
Nope.
And because there are 10.
It sounds like a very efficient plan.
Okay, all right, so Ms.
Jana would never have thought of it, Graham.
No, no, you're right.
All right, our next one is the K-Tex Center Board. And currently, that is, is it Ms. Carlson?
I'm on it, too.
Okay, and Ms. Osborne. But we have two reps on that committee.
I have three.
Agree?
I'm on it, and my term goes until the end of next year, I believe.
My term goes to the end of this year, so Ellen's term is technically the one that's up, even though she's not served on it as long.
Right, there's a one-three-year term that's open.
I nominate Ellen Osborne. I move that Ellen Osborne be appointed as the Alamo County Third Rep.
Okay. And again, we'll vote on all of these together. So.
You still need a second, second.
Okay, second, okay.
Mr. Page, you also need an alternate for the prep board.
If there's no objections, I can serve as the alternate on the prep board. All right, now moving back to the Texan Board, Ms. Osborne, Ms. Carlson, and Dr. Acuff are now our current representatives. Are there any other volunteers or any of those? Because, Ms. Carlson, you were saying your term is one more year, right?
Yeah, I think we only need to do one, and if Ellen's okay doing it, it sounds.
Ellen's is the only one that's open, Graham.
Right.
Okay. All right, next is the Capital Improvement Program Committee, or Oversight Committee, Capital Improvement Oversight. And currently, I think that's Dr. Acuff and Mr. Alcarro.
And I would like to stay on that for another year.
I would as well, but if someone really wants it, I would step aside.
Okay, hearing no one else, we will accept you two to remain. Our next one is the Audit Committee, and I'm not aware, I'm not too sure who's on our Audit Committee, or our representative on the Audit Committee.
It's me.
Okay, Ms. Osborne. Are you willing to continue to serve, Ms. Osborne?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, the PEF Foundation Board. I'm currently on that board from our board. So would anyone else like to take that position?
I think it's you, Graham.
Okay. All right, next is our Discipline Committee. I'm on that board along with, I think, Dr. Alcarro, I mean, Dr. Mr. Alcarro and Mr. Ober. Aren't you on it, too?
Yes.
So the three of us are currently on Discipline.
I wouldn't mind chairing that.
Nor would I. I really wasn't aware that I was on it, so if somebody else wants to do that.
You didn't hear me correctly, Jana. I said I want to chair it, not.
Oh, okay, got it. I misunderstood what you said.
All right, we probably need one other rep, I think, on that committee.
Katrina?
I, yes, I can be on that committee. I have not served in that role. It seems kind of difficult because you're dealing with obviously hard situations, but I'm happy to give it a year.
All right, Legislative Committee? I think that's Ms. Carlson.
Yes, and that one, I'm happy to pass off. I don't think I have the time necessary to commit to that in a way that is as impactful. I think Jana's also on it, and I can't speak for Jana. He's done a great job, but I'm happy to pass that along to someone else, and I can participate. I can still talk to people, and I don't have to be on the committee.
And I would love to stay on it. So yes, I would welcome anybody else. And thank you for the job you've actually done, Katrina. You've been terrific.
I just feel like I've left Helen hanging too many times with emails. I'm like, someone else can come in with fresh energy.
We have another volunteer for legislator?
Judy.
I could do it.
Okay. All right, Communication.
There's no other takers. Judy, Ellen.
No, nobody else stepped up. Communication, Judy, I think that was Dr. Acuff and Ms. Lee, right?
Yeah.
I would like to stay on that.
Yeah.
All right.
I'd be happy to. We need to get fired up again.
All right. The next one is the New School Board Orientation Committee. And I guess that committee would function if, in the November elections, we have a new board member being elected. Correct? Is that our standing committee that we always have?
I'll do it.
Okay.
Yeah, and David and I did it a couple of years ago, and I'd be happy to do it as well if nobody else would like to.
Okay. Right here, no others. All right, the Thomas Jefferson Adult and Career Center Board.
Could someone explain what that is for me?
Yes, it's adult education. It's now run through PBCC.
How often does it meet?
Yeah, Ms. Osborne, how often does it meet?
I don't know, but I'll do it if nobody else wants to.
Okay, because you are currently doing it, right?
Yeah, I don't think they've met, like, this whole last year.
Okay, wow, okay. All right, but you will do it if no one.
I'll do it if they ever meet.
Okay. All right, so we have all 10 of our boards filled. Do we need, do I need to go back over the names, or does everyone remember who our committee members are?
Did Jennifer write them down? I move we adopt the list that was adopted by Jennifer.
Second.
All right, Ms. Johnson, could you give us a roll call vote on the committees?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Okay, now, even though we are pretty well into the meeting, just to have a mic check and to make sure that we all, that anyone who's listening, know our board members. Dr. Kada.
Mr. Page, would you like to introduce our student member?
I'm getting to that.
I'm sorry, I jumped again.
Okay, Dr. Acuff? Tell us about your district.
I'm Kada. I represent the Jack Jewett District.
Okay, Jana Alcarro?
I'm Jana Alcarro. I'm at large.
Katrina Carlson?
Katrina Carlson, Ryod District.
Judy Lee?
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Dave Ober?
I'm Dave Ober, and I'm just large. Whitehall District.
Ellen Osborne?
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
And I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. And our new student rep appearing for the first time tonight is Mr. Angel Pelkey. So, Mr. Pelkey, could you just give us a few details to let us know about you? And again, and we really do welcome you to the board.
Yes.
You'll be with us for the next roughly three months. So we really, really do appreciate you applying for and accepting the position to be our student rep on the board. So, Mr. Pelkey.
Thank you, Chairman Page. So all those, I guess, at home watching, and I guess officially introducing myself to the board, my name is Angel Pelkey Chavez, and I am a senior at Almaro High School. And student representation has always been something that's been dear to me in my participation in the Alamo County Student Advisory Committee, as well as the Student Equity Advisory Team and in student government at my high school. It's something that I never imagined I'd be representing the students on the board, so it's truly an honor to be here and giving a voice to roughly around 14,000 students. So it's truly an honor to be here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pelkey. And we do look forward to your participation and make sure whenever you have anything to say to the board or any questions or any observations, make sure that you let your voice be heard. So again, welcome to the committee, I mean, to the board. Um, moving next to our next item, approval of the agenda, I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda and to have school board and superintendent business moved up to before approval of the consent agenda. So in other words, to move superintendent business to this position to proceed next. So could I?
I still move, I still move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Mr. Ober, that we amend the agenda and move superintendent business to the next item on the agenda. Mrs. Johnston, could you take the role on that?
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Ober?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. Okay, Dr. Haas will be presenting some school board business to us next. So, Dr. Haas, and again, thank you, Dr. Haas, for presiding at the beginning of this meeting.
My pleasure. My pleasure. Thank you, Mr. Page. And also, I want to take just a quick moment to welcome Mr. Pelkey to the board. I remind you that as a board member, I'm here to serve you, and there's anything you need that I can help your tenure on the board, be as successful as you want it to be, I'm here to help you, and my staff is also here to assist you as well. There is a, there's a provision in our, in our board policy where if, if, if I need to take an action without the board, and the, the action is not addressed in policy, then I would be able to take the action out of exigency and then come back to the board and report what I did, why I did it, and hopefully address policy moving forward. Well, the, the opposite is not true. If there is a policy that stands with the board, I am not entitled to make a change or make a decision that conflicts with adopted board policy, and then come back in a board meeting and say I violated board policy, here's why I did it. That, it doesn't work that way. This summer, when, when, when my staff presented stages of return to school to the school board, we outlined each stage, and in, and we outlined the provisions for each stage, and what kind of activities would take place during each stage. And when the board adopted that return to school plan, it essentially put in policy what our return to school plan would be. So I cannot, outside of a board meeting, make a change to it in any way. And so tonight, I do know there's a, there is a great deal of communication going on, and perhaps I'm anticipating a desire on the part of the board to look at Stage One, and to look at the activities that go on in Stage One, specifically around athletics and extracurricular activities. And so in anticipation of that, I invited our Director of Secondary Education, Mr. Jay Thomas, to the meeting to provide a current state to the board on what is currently going on with our athletics and extracurricular programs. So at this point, Mr. Thomas, would you please take it from here?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Haas. Good evening, Chairman Page and board members. Jay Thomas, I'm the Director of Secondary Education. I wanted to share with you guys in Stage, let's get that going, in Stage Three, what is going on with athletics and extracurriculars and what that looks like. So currently in Stage Three, before I start, I'd really love to thank Eileen Gomez, Mindy Moran, our three athletic directors, Deb Tyson, Steve Hiana, Matthew Pyramin, who have been so, so instrumental in Bullet Number One there, reviewing local, state, national criteria, getting input from local health experts, and really helping to develop safety protocols to do our best to mitigate COVID-19 and, and, and give kids opportunities within our schools. And they've done a wonderful job and been a huge support to me, so thank you all so much. Also like to thank our band, drama and film, choir, and military sponsors, who in Stage Three did the third bullet there, put in permission protocols that start back at the school. The link there actually is, is protocols that the above group helped us put together and have gone through and put those out to their principal or athletic directors, and then came down to a central committee that I help run for review to make sure protocols are being reviewed. So those are groups that are bringing kids in. And all, all those different groups are either athletics or extracurriculars, and they're voluntary opportunities for our kids. This next slide just shows how much work has really gone in, not only with the VHSL, but with the above group that I mentioned in putting in a protocols for our events. The VHSL has done a wonderful job of putting together guidelines for return to participate for each individual specific sport. And we follow those, and we've added our own guidelines on top of those as well and put in mitigation strategies within our schools to really continue to decrease that risk of transmission of COVID-19. As far as hosting events, we also have guidelines on, on what that looks like. Our athletic directors have been working diligently with their, their regions and the district to put together what that would look like in our school, what it would look like when we go to, to, to other schools in our district and play events. And again, there's a link there to those, what those guidelines look like. So, those are all things that are happening right now. Just to step back and kind of talk about what's our current state. If you guys may remember, the VHSL has three seasons. The first season is, is in the fall, then the winter and the spring. And they actually adjusted that a little bit this year. So, we started with what's called Season One, which is our winter sports. They actually started December 7th, so our kids have been practicing since December 7th in Stage Three. Games actually have already started for VHSL. So, the Jefferson District has already started games for the schools that, that were able to participate. And we are, our first games will actually be tomorrow night. And regional plays for, for the fall sport or for the winter sports, Season One, is in February, starts February 8th and state playoffs start February 15th. I was on a call this morning with VHSL and, and state athletic leaders throughout the state. In my understanding is currently as of today, there's around 60% participation statewide with VHSL activities. That's as of this morning. So, what are our, our Season One winter sports and how many kids are participating? So, wanted to share this with you all. So, there's really five sports that are going on in the winter. Basketball, cheer, track, swim and dive, and wrestling. And you can see 606 students in Almarl County take advantage of these sports on Season One winter sports. The extracurriculars that I shared earlier, jazz band, drum line, Keller Guard Choir, drama film and Military Club represent about 95 students who have been taking advantage of putting through that, the protocol procedures and, and, and being able to come in is, is a group and take advantage of that. We've also had other groups put in one-time events like senior pitchers and things like that. But these are groups that, excuse me, have gotten kids together on a more consistent basis. And the last thing I wanted to share with you, what are the frequently asked questions and concerns that we've heard? Swallowing air, sorry. Can we allow just athletes, F, excuse me, can we allow just athletics and nothing else? Then we've said, no, we strongly recommend that both athletics and extracurriculars happen together and not separate. And that's why we developed out those procedures and forms to be able to go through and make sure everyone's doing their best to mitigate the transfer. Can we allow some sports but not other sports to continue? VHSL, again, has put together very thorough guidelines on each individual sport. They review that with state and national recommendations from the organizations that run those sports. And so, what we have done is recommended that all sports to participate versus just choosing individual sports. And the last frequently asked question we really get is, have we had any COVID cases in our athletic program? And the answer is yes. I think all, all programming have had something to do with, with COVID, whether it's program related or out, out of the program related. And then for us, that's ranged from a self-isolation or quarantine to actually have an entire team needing to quarantine. So, that's the range that, that we've had with our programs so far. Just wanted to have an opportunity to share that with you guys. So, that was the, the slides that I wanted to share. So, thank you.
Are there any questions from Mr. Thomas about athletics, extracurricular activities that are, that are going on this week under Stage Three?
Just a clarification, Mr. Thomas, about the COVID cases. Was, was that any transmission or at, at the advance or the practices? Or was it outside exposure?
So, they, my understanding is there was no transmission within the school. So, the procedures they've put together have, have been great. And also, we've had some students self-isolating for outside reasons and reporting that in. We have a checklist kids go through each day and families are supposed to go through before they come in. So, it's been a wide range, but I am not aware of any transfer within the program.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Mr. Page.
All right, Dr. Haas?
So, Mr. Thomas, if you might end your screen sharing. Really appreciate that, Mr. Thomas. So, at this point, I'm going to turn things back over to Mr. Page for any board discussion around the conditions of our stages.
Okay. Do any of our board members have questions or comments related to athletic program and how it stands now? And also, what would happen to it if we moved back into Stage One?
My understanding is that currently, if we, and we are moving back to Stage One unless I'm mistaken.
Yes.
Stage One, as of, I don't know if it's Sunday or Monday, sports and extracurriculars have to cease until we go back to Stage Three. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, right, Dr. Haas? And Mr. Thomas?
Yes, Saturday, we, we have games and events on Friday and Saturday, and they would be the last one scheduled as of now. Yes, sir.
Okay.
I, I guess the question I have is whether it makes sense, given how, whether it makes sense to decouple these extracurricular, these sports and other activities from the Stage One paradigm. And we've received almost as many letters on this as any other topic for some time. And many student, I mean, as someone who has promoted all of our efforts toward student mental health, I would be in favor of at least considering decoupling it from Stage One and permitting it to go ahead.
Yeah, so would I.
I would as well, and, and exactly for mental health issues, because I've sure heard a lot from, from constituents about these issues with their student athletes.
And my understanding is that everybody who's participating, coaches and all that, are choosing to do this, correct?
Ellen, that, that is correct. So, the athletic directors do the hiring and the, the coaches can, you know, choose not to coach if they, if they didn't want to. And, and they've worked through that. So, the coaches who are there have, have chosen to be there. Yes, ma'am.
For, for me, it's, and, and this is, this is tough for me, guys, I'll be honest with you. Because there's, 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 there's an appearance that if we say, okay, well, we're going to do sports, we're not going to have school, that we're saying academic programs are less important than the athletic program. I don't believe that's what any of us believe, but there is that, is that concern that that's what we're telegraphing out there. I'll be honest with you, the number of parents that have contacted me has, has, has not a whole lot of impact on me. What impacts me is I've had some, some pretty concerned, concerning emails from students who are expressing, I mean, beyond angst, it, it is right, you're right, Dr. Acuff, it's, it's a mental health issue. They need, they need. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to rely on Dr. Haas, but my gut tells me that we should try to figure out a way to let, let this happen. Because I think, for me, the athletics was a big part of my high school and college career. And if we can make it happen safely, I, 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 I think we owe it to our high school kids to try.
I would love to hear from our student rep, Mr. Pelkey.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Oberg and Dr. Acuff that it really is mental health. And I'm, I'm a captain on this one team this year, and I can tell you that it's, it's been a little bit rough, you know, going from planning a season to all of a sudden now we, our first meet won't be till regionals. We don't, we're not quite sure if we'll even have a season. My one concern, though, is that as much as I want to play sports, I am concerned about VHSL's mask wearing policy. And I don't, personally, I don't think it's very responsible of them to pull that back. I know that there are organizations around here that, like Baba, that require masks worn. I know it's inconvenient, but sometimes we have to make sacrifices if we want to play the sport and then get that break from the day. That's my only concern. But I do agree that we should look into going and being allowed to play sports.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thomas, could you get, I don't have, I don't know about the VHSL mask policy, so.
It, it's not a VHSL mask policy. The, that is, I think, a, a national recommendation that came down without some legal support is my understanding. And so, there is, their stance is it's a, it's a, it's a county decision. So, there are some divisions that have required students to wear masks, and there's others that haven't. I think one of the, the governor's executive orders says that the athletes and students participating in athletics and things like that do not have to wear masks. So, it's, you know, most of the school systems, I understand one of my meetings this morning, are not wearing masks. There are some schools in Northern Virginia, some other places, that are asking their kids to wear masks to participate.
Mr. Thomas, what is our county policy or does it vary from one school to another with this?
With the wearing of the mask?
Yes.
So, with the wearing of the mask, we have procedures in place that, that coaches have to have masks on at all time. That the students have masks on unless they're actually competing or, or exercising. If they're on the sideline or resting, they would have their masks on.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I very much appreciate the mental health component of this. I feel like decoupling it from Stage Three might make sense. But for me, it's hard to get my head around saying that our buildings are not safe for students who have insufficient internet access or who have special needs or are English language learners or who we have identified as disengaged, that those, that our buildings are not safe for them, who we would have in Stage Two, but they're safe enough for these activities where the respiration is higher. So, to me, and, you know, for people looking for voluntary, voluntarily going into the buildings, that's what Stage Two offers as well. So, for me, it would make more sense to couple it with Stage Two. I'm not, I'm not sure. We seem to go from three to one, and I don't, I guess we're not really doing two anymore. And I don't know if there are major logistical problems with that. For me, the voluntary part of it is not as compelling an argument because the surge, most of the post-holiday COVID surges have been from people doing voluntary activities. And that does affect the rest of the community, not least of which, the very taxed healthcare system, which, you know, that data we use in determining stages. So, for me, I feel like taking it, doing this during Stage One carries with it a lot of cognitive dissonance for me.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Are there any other comments?
Chair Page, what would be the procedure for, for doing so?
We would need a motion to change, to modify what our current policy is. So, the motion could be to have athletics occur during Stage One or in Stage Two, like Ms. Lee is saying, or some combination of those or maybe just remaining as it is, I guess, which wouldn't need a motion. But we have received a lot of emails about this. So, we would need a motion to modify what our current policy is.
It could also be, I mean, yeah, it, it could. Dr. Haas, can you tell us your thoughts, please?
Exactly what I was going to ask.
My thoughts are that I have shared information about athletics with the board and that, so that you have a complete understanding of what we have in terms of safety parameters to students are as safe as can be if they participate. As I said, I have provided, provided what I think you need to make a decision. And is, is there something else, some other information that I've not provided that you would like to hear?
It would be my understanding if we did decouple it, that if there were an outbreak in the track team, that you would still have the authority to shut that down immediately.
We, that's, that's a good question. We, we do practice all of the required contact tracing, just like we do for staff that come into schools, just like we do for students that come into the schools. We also do that for students that present positive. There is also quarantining that takes place. So, that, all, all those things are in place whenever we have a case presented at the school. It takes place for athletics as well.
I move that we revise the policy to allow the winter sports to go forward, decoupled from our stages.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Oberg and second by Mr. Alcaro, that we move forward and allow winter sports to be dis, no disconnected, rather, from our current policy. Is there any discussion on that motion?
Could I ask a question from, of Mr. Oberg? Are you, the, the list of activities that are also coupled in the policy are the extracurricular?
It was my intention that the extracurriculars also be decoupled. I'm sorry if I was unclear. It was my intention that the extracurriculars that we discussed tonight also be uncoupled.
Thank you.
All right, I have a question, Mr. Oberg. Is your motion just for winter sports or should it include?
Right now, it's just for winter sports.
Okay, just for winter. All right, so we would have to do something else in one spring.
I, I, I think, I think this is an opportunity, to the extent that we accept this, this is an opportunity for our students and our staff to prove that it works. And then, you know, quite frankly, if it doesn't work, then the spring sports won't happen. But God willing, we're, we get vaccinations and that's not an issue.
Any other discussion? Ms. Carlson?
I guess I would add that one point that goes around in my head is, I believe it was, someone told me that, it's not Dr. McKay, but Mr. McKay from the Thomas Jefferson, our Blue Ridge Health District, mentioned how when we have students in our buildings with good mitigation strategies, it's actually can be beneficial in terms of contact tracing. And so, and I think if we stop sports for the next two weeks, it's not that these kids go home and, and, and do nothing. They go out and they still exercise and they go to the gym and they go and they meet up. And it's, and it's without having an adult there who's making sure they're wearing their mask and distancing. And it's without the ability to say that I was with this specific set of students. It's with whoever was at the gym that day. And so, I guess, although I'm not saying by any means that it's an easy discussion, decision, that's something that, that is, that is going through my head. So, with that, I, I would be in support of decoupling it.
Are there any other comments? Okay, Ms. Johnson. Well, the motion is that we will decouple winter sports from our stages and that winter, and activities, that winter sports and activities will be decoupled from our stage guidelines. So, Ms. Johnson, could you take a roll call vote on that motion?
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Acknowledging Judy Lee's very good points, I vote yes.
Ms. Lee?
No.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Oberg?
Yes.
Mister Page?
Yes. And also acknowledging Mrs. Lee's very good point. So the motion does pass and our winter sports are dissociated from uh ever which stage we are in. Our next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. So we have a motion.
I approve, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Okay, move by Mister Alcaro, second by Ms. Lee, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mister Oberg?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mister Alcaro?
Yes.
Doctor Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Carlson?
Yes.
Mister Page?
Yes.
Please pass.
Okay, the motion passes. We now move down to a public comment and our vice chair, Ms. Carlson. Will decide.
Thank you, Chair Page. I'm gonna start by reading the public comment guidelines. The school board invites and actively seeks the public's input in the matters relevant to school board governance and provides for time during its business meetings to hear from Albemarle County residents and community members. As authorized by ordinance of the county of Albemarle, the school board will hold its meetings electronically during the pandemic and this. The school board is nevertheless committed to encouraging public comment, excuse me, encouraging public comment despite its need to meet on a virtual basis. For this reason, there will be two ways for the public to provide comment. First, as always, written comments can be submitted to the school board clerk prior to the start of the meeting and then will be distributed to all the school board members for review. Second, um as long as we're holding our meetings electronically, members of the public wishing to provide public comment during the meeting may sign up online by 1 P M. The day of the meeting. Before electronic public comment starts, I am going to announce the order in which the speakers will comment. I actually do so three at a time. Due to the number of people who have signed up to speak today, there are thirty five people currently on the list. Comments are gonna be limited to two minutes each. Um we try to reach out to let everyone know that ahead of time, so hopefully you've adjusted accordingly. I will notify you when you reach a one minute mark. The notification is me putting up a one, so it might be hard to see. Um just so you know, the clerk does have the ability to disconnect a speaker who's disruptive, profane, or fails to abide by these guidelines. Speakers during the meeting or those submitting written comments should state their name and address or magisterial district and. Further, speakers should limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or or the operations of the school division. Lastly, although the school board will not respond to comments made during the public comment period, we may address comments at the end of the meeting agenda other under, excuse me, under other business. So with that. The first three speak, the first three speakers are gonna be Vernon Lech- Lechtie. Um Erin Wise Akenbaum and Michelle Drago. So. Vernon Lechtie, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that, you're up if you're on right now.
I am on, thank you. Uh. Good evening. My name is Vernon Lechtie and I'm a government teacher at Albemarle High School. I would like to applaud the central office's decision to return to phase one for the next two weeks. The metrics that you determined for return to stage one have been met. Uh to clarify, the metrics for return to stage one was two hundred COVID cases per hundred thousand people over the last fourteen days. And greater than.
Videos off right now. Not awesome.
Mister Lechtie, I'll pause your time. Somebody is not muted, so I don't know if everyone can um make sure they're muted because there's some background interference. Okay. Sorry about that, Mister Lechtie.
It's no problem. Can everybody hear me okay? Alright, wonderful. How, is it alright if I start over? Alright, fantastic. Alright, so once again, I'm Vernon Lechtie, a government teacher at Albemarle High School. Uh I'd like to applaud the central office's decision to return to phase one for the next two weeks. Uh the metrics that you determined for return to stage one ha- have been met. Uh to clarify, the metrics for return to stage one was two hundred COVID cases per hundred thousand people in the county over the last fourteen days. And a greater than eight percent positivity rate in the COVID diagnostic testing over the last fourteen days. Uh as of today, Albemarle County has been at over two hundred COVID cases per hundred thousand uh people since December fifth. And has a higher than eight percent positivity rate in COVID testing since January sixth. Uh while I agree with the decision to return to stage one for the next two weeks, I'm still apprehensive about how decisions for reopening will be made in the future. Uh in two weeks, U V A students will have returned and every student will be required to receive a COVID test on a weekly basis. As we have seen prior to December, U V A students and the massive amount of COVID testing done by U V A has had enormous impact on our county's positivity rating. The county's positivity rate will drop. Uh please understand, though, that all this means is that more people in the county are getting tested due to U V A's policies. According to John Hopkins COVID Resource Center, positivity ratings are simply a measure of testing capacity. It is not a measure of how prevalent the virus is in the community. Since U V A students left for their winter break, the county has gone from a positivity rating of two point one percent on November thirtieth to a rating of eight point five percent today. That is over a four hundred percent increase in six weeks. My concern is that when February comes around, our positivity rating will sharply drop and the school division will immediately see that as a sign to proceed to stages three or four of reopening. Without analyzing, this is due to actual diminishing of COVID infections or solely due to the increased testing on U V A students. Unless we are willing to test all A C P S staff, students, and families at the same rate as U V A students. Our positivity rating and one of our key metrics for a safe reopening will be heavily skewed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mister Lechtie. Um. And thank you for stopping stopping yourself because I, my timer went off and then I didn't realize. Um the next speaker will be Ms. Wise Akenbaum.
Thank you, board members, for going back to level one, like the central office promised they do. Um the levels are high and I feel like it's completely irresponsible to have our sports teams back out. Um Ms. Lee, thank you for always being that advocate. The levels are so high. You know, the the nurse at um Monticello High School said the thermometers don't work. The children come in and their s- their skin are, it's very cold and they put thermometers. You know, they have to get really close. They have to get about two or three feet away to get the thermometers near their head. Um you're letting kids wrestle, they're, that's no, you know, that's basketball, rascal. I understand kids wanna do it. And T, I have been a parent of a teenager, but that without contacting nurses and doctors, is this a good idea? I don't think so. I think it's totally irresponsible. I'm shocked, shocked. Um I wanna leave you with um. Three rhetorical questions. When are the student or the county government officers, office employees expected to resume in person? And that is. March fifteenth. On when is Charlottesville's city schools to resume in person for all students? That's March eighth. When are our class B employees, like teachers and staff at schools, hopefully gonna have access to their first step shot? And that's not until probably March. Um it's not safe. You're letting teenagers do what they, they really wanna get together. I get it. But to say that because if we don't have them together, that um they're gonna go run and, you know, sneeze on each other. I mean, that's. You know, I work out, you all probably are healthy and workout. I work out every single day. And I'm six, six to ten feet away, not inside, I'm outside, and you can do it. And also, if you have such a shortened time, you have these athletes running and getting injured left and.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. And feel free to email. I know you email. I've read them.
I'm good. Thank you for reading them. I appreciate it, but thank you, Ms. Lee.
Okay, um the next speaker will be Michelle Drago.
Hi, uh before I start, I just wanna say that I really second what uh Mister Lechtie said about positivity uh testing. I really think that needs to be reconsidered because we all know that U V A will skew that and there's no uh two ways about that. Now, what I wanted to comment on um is, speaking on behalf of a group of my colleagues, um several of us, so that you uh did not have to hear the same public comment many times, we would like to address our. Grave concerns with the rollout of the COVID vaccine for A C P S employees. We understand that the board is not in control of the rollout. But we have some grave concerns and questions that we need help getting answers for. We would like to know why we have been told initially that we probably won't get them until March and then in an email tonight, we were still not given a specific timeline. Uh even though we were told to fill out a form, but we were told it may be difficult to get an appointment initially. This is especially concerning in light of the fact that our fellow teachers in Charlottesville City Schools are receiving their first vaccines as soon as January twenty first. That is one week from today. We're thrilled for our colleagues in the city schools, but we wanna know why A C P S has not secured vaccines for us and developed a plan with the same speed as city leadership. Um especially since city city leadership has uh really shown concern for staff uh safety and they have not uh returned in person yet and are not planning to do so until March. While many of us have had to work in person with students for months now and will need to even more if we go back to even phase two, three, or maybe even four, God forbid. Uh we're extremely displeased that the county has not been as organized or proactive as our neighboring school districts, especially since it seems that A C P S's priority has been to get students and teachers back in the buildings. Um sooner than others. We feel this is unacceptable and that our health is being undervalued. And again, we know the board is not responsible for this decision, but we do want to know. Why neighboring districts have been able to procure the vaccine for their staff and to organize their vaccination schedules and why we are uh absolutely not there. We would like to know what steps will be taken to ensure that staff have the opportunity to be vaccinated before we need to return in person to teaching again.
Thank you, Ms. Drago. The next three speakers um will be Sean Boyd. Bonnie Marty and Harper McQueen. Sean Boyd, if you are on, you may go.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Um so I'm here again tonight to urge you guys to continue your efforts to bring back physical learning as an option for all students of the county after the next two weeks in stage one. The time for saying we can't has passed. It's time to say how can we? I've got two minutes, so I'm gonna make two points. Um we need to ease away from the very tight outdated indicators of community spread. Two, we need the teacher vaccinations. On the first point, I realized the metrics in our county have increased beyond the recommended C D C guidelines. That said, we're trying to hold ourselves to very difficult standards here. The C D C guidelines label a fourteen day case rate of two hundred for one hundred thousand people as the threshold for highest risk of transmission. Think about that from that. Two hundred cases over fourteen days, that makes about four hundred in a month, eight hundred in two months. If you, even if you take that two month number out of a hundred thousand people, that means just under one percent would contract the virus in that period. For perspective, the flu has an incidence rate of three percent to fourteen percent each year, depending upon the severity. A recent report from Brown University School of Public Health noted that the C D C metrics that were established back in July are now outdated, given how much we've learned since then. We've had schools all over the country and overseas reopening. And we've got the benefit now of their experience. The feared breakouts largely didn't happen. Specifically, the National COVID nineteen School Response Dashboard recorded data from over eight million students this fall, half of whom were attending in-person learning. They found the percentage of in-person students who tested positive for COVID to be one point two percent. No higher and even slightly lower than the one point five percent average for the respective communities during the same time period. So the experts now seem to be moving away from the idea of toggling schools on and off depending upon the community spread metrics, and I suggest we do too. Point number two is on teacher vaccinations. All school employees fall into vaccination priority group one B. I've learned that vaccinations will be open in group one B here in our district, January twenty ninth, so I'm off a week from the earlier speaker. Um what I understand is priority is given to the school systems, both public and private that reach out first. And I'm pretty confident that all the private schools in our area have already reached out. So my question to the board is, what have we, what have we reached, or have we reached out?
Mister Boyd, your time is up. I'm sorry.
And if, okay, thank you.
Thank you for giving comments. The next speaker that we have is uh Bonnie Marty. Bonnie, if you're on, it is your turn. Let me look real quick. I see something that says Bonnie's iPhone, but I don't know if she's here right now, so I'll move up. I'll move her to the bottom of the list and come back. And if I forget to do so, can someone please remind me? I'm like going off a pen and paper here. Um next up, we'll move to Harper McQueen.
Thank you. Um first of all, I appreciate the fact that you have gone back to virtual class for the time being. Um I think it should stay that way. Although the kids that have gone back have followed safety measures and you didn't have many outbreaks, is it worth the outbreaks you did have? As a student, I would rather stay virtual than go back to school and risk my life and my family members' lives. Keeping some kids virtual and some kids in person is incredibly disruptive. Kids might have to change. Teachers to accommodate kids who are in person. As much as I love to believe that my classmates will wear masks and always remember to social distance, I know that won't happen. I love politics and debate and I know many people who listen to politicians who denounce masks. And even think that the precautions that were taken were blown way out of proportion. Knowing this, it isn't crazy to think many kids will try and protest the rules put in place for other people's safety. After the initiation of a way for the day, many kids would try to hide their phones and use them in class. Why can't they do that with masks? Even taking it down below your nose could get someone sick. Something my mom, who's a regular in your inbox, has taught me is this is something extremely serious. She has said that instead of focusing on wants during this time, we need to focus on what's best for the safety of every person's life. And currently, the best thing to do is keep kids virtual. Thank you so much for having me and I hope my personal opinion has helped you see things from the point of view of a student.
Thank you, Ms. McQueen, and I I always give a shout out when we have a student um come and speak. I know it's tough to do, so good job and thank you. The next three speakers will be Amy Gertner, Susan Rigby, and Eliza Hallen. Amy, I know I saw you earlier. Yes.
Good evening, board members, Doctor Haas and A C P S families. My name is Amy Gertner and I'm a resident of the Whitehall District, listening to community concerns tonight. There are many things happening in our country that are out of our control, but right now, the safety and well-being of members of this community are yours and mine. What we do and say will affect the lives of all members of this community. I began playing two truths and a lie with my second graders this week. Mine were. I like to eat Spanish. I've never gotten a speeding ticket and I love to ride roller coasters. A student guessed not getting the speeding ticket was a lie. No, that is true. Even second graders have trouble believing someone my age has never had a speeding ticket. I believe we should follow rules that keep ourselves and others safe. I love and care about the people riding in the car with me and I love and care about the people riding around me. The consequences are just not worth the risk. My life would forever be changed by an accident. This week, my mother is quarantined at Branchlands. My mom ate near a resident who was diagnosed with COVID nineteen after going to a family event. The facility is now locked down and the residents will not get their rapid COVID test until tomorrow. Even if we were careful and follow rules, the behavior of others affects our safety. The A C P S threshold has had us weighed into we're in the higher and highest risk transmissions for schools for weeks before moving back to stage one. Tonight, I asked Doctor Haas and the board not to move back to stage three until all C P S educators are vaccinated. You tell educators you care and appreciate our work, while at the same time, you're willing to take great risks with our lives. In closing, my Angela said, I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel. Please consider what you as a board and individuals need to say and do to ensure that people in our community know you care about them. The communities of color are disproportionately affected by COVID nineteen. Protecting them is something we can do by slowing down the transmission rate. Valentine's Day is one month away. Let's model what loving our neighbors really look like in the A C P S community. Thank you again for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Gertner, for those comments. The next speaker is Susan Rigby.
Yes, um hello. Good evening, school board members and Doctor Haas. Thank you for having me here tonight. Um I'm a science teacher at Walden Middle School. I've been an educator for over thirty two years. A classroom teacher in Albemarle County for nearly twenty three years and a virtual teacher for almost one year. This is the most challenging year I have ever experienced as an educator. I have two points that I'd like to speak on this evening. First, uh thank you, Doctor Haas, the board and central office for making the decision to move us to stage one. The um positivity rate and the number of cases are beyond the um range of being safe. My concern is how and when decisions are made to move to each stage. We need consistent and clear benchmarks for each stage. I'm concerned about making a decision on a weekly basis, um as Doctor Haas mentioned yesterday. It will be difficult for parents and families to plan, finding out on a Wednesday for the next Monday. It will make it difficult for teachers, especially elementary teachers, to plan between virtual and hybrid uh for each week. Most students, as we know, thrive on consistency, especially students who are struggling with anxiety and depression, and many students. Are as well are adults this time, this uh during this pandemic time. During this um. During this time, students really truly need consistency even more than during. during this time, students really truly need consistency even more than during our regular school time. The second point I'd like to make is really shifting gears. Is that after this time, after this time of the pandemic, learning will never be the same again. It will never look the same again. It will never be the same again. So many things that we're learning and seeing, we will implement when we are back in the classroom. This is a time and opportunity that we can really turn education inside out and upside down. We are definitely a progressive county. We have been since I've started. Learning occurs inside and outside of the classroom, and we need to look at how we can change, how we do education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rigby. The next speaker will be Eliza Holland.
Unmute, right? Like the term of 2020?
I can hear you now.
Okay, great. Hello, my name is Eliza Holland and I live in the Ryland District. I am a former Alamo parent, the team director for the Alamo Mountain Bike Club and a pediatrician at UVA. I'm here tonight as a concerned community member to show my strong support for school reopening. I've been seeing COVID patients in the hospital since March, and I understand the concern about exposure and possible illness. I am also a volunteer camp doctor, and last summer I had the chance to participate in successful mitigation measures at an overnight camp that was able to stay open without any transmission of COVID. The metrics that you were using to make your decisions have not been updated since September. However, the past several months have given us a lot of information about school opening during the pandemic. The evidence is now clear that schools can and should remain open, even in areas of high transmission with good mitigation practices, masking, distancing and good hand washing. There are a lot of concerns about the ability of children to wear masks consistently, and I can tell you they do a far better job than most of the adults that I know. The American Academy of Pediatrics states there's mounting evidence of the low transmission within schools, even in communities with escalating community transmission. At an A A P town hall meeting last week, leaders stated that community transmission should not be the only metric used to determine when to reopen. Duke recently published a study that looked at spread in schools that were open in the fall, either hybrid or in person. They said the spread in schools was only 4% of what they expected based on community transition, transmission. They expected to have 800 cases and they had 32. No teacher got sick from students. Let me repeat that. There was no student to teacher transmission. The current seven day daily average of new cases in Alamo is 44 per 100,000. That is well below the national average of 73 per 100,000. The positivity rate in our health district has been trending down over the past few days, even without being diluted out by the UVA students. Our increasing numbers have everything to do with personal gatherings that are considered safe, not anything to do with gathering in areas that have good mitigation, masking, distancing and hand washing.
Thank you, Dr. Holland. The next three speakers are going to be Michelle Pitsiokos, Luca Tesserary and Jane Wiggins. So I will see if I see Michelle's name on the list.
I don't see her.
Okay, so I will circle her for now and try to loop back at the end if she pops on. After that is Luca Tesserary, which I feel like I've spoken before because I think I pronounced it right that time, but I'm probably messing it up this time.
No, you got it.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Okay, good evening, everyone. We spoke back in December, but as a reinstruction, my name is Luca Tesserary. I'm a junior at Western Alamo and I'm on the varsity basketball team. Again, this evening, I've just stepped off the court to speak with you. Since we last spoke on December 10th, I have emailed you all in Dr. Haas Weekly with COVID updates, articles about current suicides and student athletes and other news postings about sports and the pandemic. I have included articles about how other superintendents and school boards across the state have stood up for their student athletes and allow them to continue to play sports. With each email, I get a brief response back from Dr. Haas. I like to publicly ask you all this evening, with the exception of Ms. Osborne, not a single one of you has responded to me. Not one of you has taken the time to address my issues or concerns. As elected officials, you show me that you do not care what your community and constituents have to say. You've made me feel unheard and ignored. The decision was just made to move back to phase one again. Why on Friday, when the numbers were even worse than they were yesterday, did you move forward with phase three? You've ripped the rug out from under us student athletes a second time, and it is cruel. You show me through your lack of action and response that you do not have our best interests at heart. You do not care about our mental or physical health. I'm here tonight to ask you and Dr. Haas to make an exception to your phase one and two guidelines to allow sports to continue. Counties and districts all over the state that are in virtual only learning allow their student athletes to play. Just look next door at Charlottesville High School or up the road at Fluvanna. Why are you denying us this opportunity? Each student athlete has signed a COVID release waiver form. We are practicing all safety guidelines set forth by the governor and the V H S L. We deserve the choice to be able to play. Tonight, I am pleading with you to do what is right. Show me for once that you care. Stand up for student athletes and let us play.
Thank you, Luca. The next speaker will be Jane Wiggins.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Hi, my name's Jane Wiggins and I'm here to comment tonight about the return to play sports. And I want to affirm your motion earlier that I heard on the live stream, but I just want to go ahead and give my comments to affirm that I'm a mom of four and I'm also coming to you from the Western Alamo High School District. I have, my youngest is a freshman there and then I also have a senior. And I'm asking you to seriously consider their continued play for our students. COVID is a harsh reality to my family. My father-in-law just recently passed away on January 3rd from COVID. So the consequences of this virus are fresh, real and raw to my family right now. But the reality of the effects of the intense isolation my children are suffering is even more daunting and scary. My own teenager's mental health is not in a good state. We've only lived in Virginia a few months before the pandemic hit, so we don't have a community in place to socialize with. My children are in their bedrooms all day, every day, trying to receive an education via Zoom. The isolation is heavy and intense. The opportunity to play sports is a treasured gift of socialization. It's very beneficial for their physical health, but more importantly, right now for their mental health. The real effects of the isolation may not be tangible to us right now, but the long-term effects have serious implications for these students. Also, the educational gap is obviously becoming greater between privileged students who are able to attend private schools, meeting in person versus our students who are limited to virtual learning. And now by limiting the athletics, you're also creating that greater divide. Many students, including minority students who often depend on athletic scholarships as their opportunity to receive higher education will be overlooked by college recruiters if they are not given the chance to play their sport and showcase their talents. Meanwhile, surrounding counties are getting to play. You've asked our students and teachers to make a lot of sacrifices for the past 10 months. They have adapted well, and now I'm asking you to please adapt. Do not make a blanket shutdown for all activities based on a presented percentage of new cases. Let's adapt new safety measures to allow our students to play. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiggins, and my condolences. It's tough to hear. Thank you for coming and giving comments. The next three speakers are going to be Chris Shiflett, Amanda Moxom and Kyle Kirkide. Ms. Shiflett, sorry, Mr. Shiflett, I see you.
No problem. Thank you. So first, I'd like to just, I'm gonna amend what I was going to say. And just thank you and applaud you for your thoughts and on this matter. You know, personally, we've seen it firsthand with their children and students who have suffered with the, you know, the return to phase one or the back and forth between ability to play and then not being able to play. But, you know, I do appreciate everyone's concern and thank you for your decision today to return or to decouple the sports from the phases. So for those that weren't up to speed, I think that, you know, you can see the frustration and the pain from them. So I do want to thank you all for making that stance. As a local business owner, we are having to deal with it and we're having to find ways to protect our employees and allow them to work safely. I believe that can be done within the schools and is being done. And I know it's scary, but I think that we all need to move forward and keep advancing. Yes, we have to learn from this and we have to implement new strategies and new procedures. But we have to move forward and I applaud you for that. So thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Shiflett. The next speaker is Amanda Moxom.
Hello, my name is Amanda Moxom and I'm in the Rio District. Tonight, I just have two talking points. One is regarding standardized testing. The second is regarding removal of SROs. For standardized testing, many believe that their children are getting behind. I think we're hearing that a lot tonight. One way to support these families and equity is to better inform and support families to opt out of standardized testing. While I understand that students taking high school credits may be negatively impacted if graduation requirements are not met, this action could quickly mitigate one huge stress factor for students not taking high school courses. As a separate but related issue, please support your English as a second language teachers in their demand that the Virginia D O E support waiving the WEDA access testing this school year. There's actually a change.org petition going around in which your ESAL teachers are directly asking for support on this critical equity issue. Regarding removal of SROs, I sat in on Charlottesville City's SRO forum earlier this week. My big takeaway is to follow Toronto's lead in the following ways. Remove all SROs from schools. Implement a model with safety reps who are not police and who are trained in anti-racism, anti-oppression and restorative practices. Center the voices of the most marginalized students, and those would be those who have experienced trauma due to overpolicing and police violence. Change the mindset of teachers and staff who rely on police officers as a safety crutch. The Toronto school system refused to comply with this mindset. Instead, they took responsibility for changing the school culture, challenging implicit and overt biases that students are dangerous and police are safe. Over 2,500 students in their system had experienced trauma from policing. They cannot learn in a school where policing exists. And those voices were centered in their reshaping of their school safety model for 247,000 students across 600 schools. Finally, you will get the results that Toronto has achieved, which are a 25% decrease in school suspensions and a 50% decrease in expulsions since removing SROs. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Moxom. The next speaker will be Kyle Kirkide. Let me see if I see.
I did not see him in there.
Okay, I will circle his name and put him at the end. The next three speakers will be Kristen Hardy, Dan Bledsoe and Jennifer Graham. Ms. Hardy, if you are in here. Oh, I see you.
Hi.
I can hear you.
Great. And I'm Kristen Hardy in the Whitehall District, and I appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight. I do want to reiterate applauding the board for decoupling athletics and extracurricular activities from the stages. I'm in full support of that. Our children need the connection to their peers, their coaches, their mentors. I can tell you that this connection has been woefully lacking during Zoom classes. They need the purpose, they need the passion, they need the teamwork, the problem solving skills, the confidence building, the stress relief, the physical activity, creative outlet. They really need it. It's been a good deal of time since we moved back to stage one in December trying to figure out why other public schools in our health district have been able to proceed with extracurricular activities, but Alamo County Public Schools has not. We're in the same community, we're utilizing the same hospitals, the same health district. We're reviewing the same data from said health district. And the only answer that I could find was it was really the preference of the school board. So I just urge you to continue to let science and experience, not optics, be the decision maker in this regard. And I'll just say that, you know, there were some comments earlier about, well, kids not participating. They are. This is an equity issue. Recreational sports are happening, travel things are happening. And it's the people that can afford to do those things that are doing it. And those that can't are the ones that are sitting on their computers waiting to hear what the next decision is going to be. So just thank you for making this decision and I hope Dave Ober that we can prove that we can do it right. And I think with the safety protocols that are in place, we can do so.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hardy. You froze a bit at the end, so I just wanted to make sure you were done. You still had a little time. Okay, the next speaker will be Mr. Bledsoe, who I see.
Good evening. My name is Dan Bledsoe. I am a teacher at Western Alamo High School and a head coach of the curricular activities from stage one requirements. I certainly understand the concern with the rising number of COVID cases in our area. But I think that we can look to local club sports teams that have been active during this time to see their success at maintaining activities and events for their athletes without increasing the risk of COVID spread. As a swim coach and a swim parent, I can speak specifically of how swim teams have been able to function as close to normal and still follow all COVID precautions. Why are extracurricular activities so important? McKinsey and Company released a study recently that called attention to how the COVID shutdown has only exacerbated the achievement gaps that exist in our society. That is why high school athletics is so important. Organized sports activity helps children develop and improve cognitive skills. Physical activity in general is associated with improved academic achievement, including grades and standardized test scores. Further, such activity can affect attitudes and academic behavior, including enhanced concentration and attention. If we shut kids out of school extracurricular activities, many of our students will continue to participate with their club teams. However, as said earlier, it is an equity issue. Our poor students, the expense of a club team is not a possibility. The benefit of participating in a school-based sports program goes beyond the playing field, the court or the pool. It plays an integral role in the academic success of many of our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. Bledsoe. The next speaker will be Jennifer Graham, and I see her as well.
So hi, I'm Jennifer Graham, and I've taught for Alamo County for 17 years at the middle school level. And I'm here tonight to really speak on behalf of some of the children I've been working with in person. Originally, I came into the school just to greet my kids that were coming in for phase three. And with permission, my principal had brought them all like a little something, just like welcome in. And then I realized really quickly that they needed me there, not just a little treat that I was bringing them. And so I ended up staying and I started teaching virtually and in person. And I can attest to the fact that these kids, they were failing. They were failing a lot of their classes and that they needed help. Some of them were battling depression at home. There are stories of eating disorders, oversleeping, self-harm. A lot of them have parents that are working during the day, and so they're left to their own devices. A few of the parents didn't speak English and I've personally, I've heard parents start to even kind of break down because they don't know how to help their own kids, working multiple jobs outside of the home. And I feel like our schools that previously partnered in helping raise these kids with these families, and that's the way our society is just kind of constructed right now, those partnerships. We've kind of, we failed them. We haven't been there to meet some of the pragmatic needs. I have one student, she was an A B student last year. She's got Ds and Fs because she's watching her younger siblings all day and she's making sure they're on their Zooms. And, you know, I feel like there's, the stories go deeper. And there's this divide between the haves and the have-nots that's really growing. For some kids, virtual learning is not working and people are romanticizing this notion of life skills. Oh, family time, slowing down, independence, grit. And there are lots of different situations, but some kids are just struggling. There are kids that I said goodbye to today that will not be participating in classes again until we're back in person. And that's just real. Some kids are sleeping too much, eating too little or binge eating. They're playing video games all day. They're watching YouTube. And every day, I just wonder how many of my students are getting more trauma at home with no refuge. They're being belittled or beat or raped, and I know those are the more extreme cases, but they're happening. We know statistically they're happening. And I know in talking with even my students today, a lot of anxiety. Are we at time?
We are.
Okay. So I could not as much as I could.
You did great. Without the little light, it's hard because I just have to start speaking when it's
Yeah, no worries, no worries. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. The next speaker, I'll take a quick pause just because I believe Mr. Ober wanted me to make note for future speakers that there is a little confusion about the vote. We moved up our comments from the superintendent and we had a short presentation. We had a short presentation about decoupling or disassociating our sports and whether or not those are allowed to continue while we are in this short timeframe of being in stage one, and the board did take a vote to say that sports can continue during this timeframe. I'm still happy and look forward to listening to comments, but I wanted to clarify that so that people knew when they were giving their comments at the request of Mr. Ober. So the next three speakers will be Samaya Moyer and Sanaa, that's one speaker, then Rob Moore, and then Matt Winkler.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep, I didn't know it was you because your title's Girls Basketball. Yep, it's you.
Hello, thank you for having me. I am Samaya Moyer. I am a part of the AHS Girls of RCD Basketball Association, and I am a senior this year. Our initial reasoning for joining the Zoom was to advocate for our winter season, but we will now be giving you guys a very big thank you for letting us continue our season because it really means a lot to us. We also wanted to ask if it was okay if Sanaa Wilson and Jordan Solak, they were also on to speak, if it's okay if we all speak together as one, if that's okay with you.
Yes, that is okay. And I can, well, when it's a group, what are the rules around that? Is it, we can do three minutes? We can do slightly more, okay.
Um, so I just wanted to say thank you. Basketball for us is a big part of what makes our routine in our days and having sort of that stability day to day with Zoom never being consistent is super important. And also, we have a bunch of girls on this team that are still interested in recruiting and pursuing that as part of the next steps of their lives, and not having a season incredibly diminishes that opportunity. And so we just wanted to say thank you for that.
Yeah, to add on what Jordan said, basketball is like a safe place to a whole lot of players. Like, they could come there to like for moral support, they could be there to let any problems that they had out, they could sit and improve on their own mentally and physically.
Yes. So we wanted to tell you thank you again because especially for basketball and being on a team, it's not just a team test, it's literally like our second family. It's another place we can go that we can talk to people. Our coach is always there for us. We always lean on each other, and we're always just improving each other in the game, but then personally immensely together to better ourselves all around. So we just want to give you guys a very big thank you because it means a lot to us to let us be able to have this opportunity. And we are definitely going to go by beyond safety measures to make sure that we are safe to help everybody else that's going to be in this building with us. So we just want to tell you thank you again.
Thank you, girls, very much for your comments. Good luck. The next speaker will be Rob Moore, and I see him.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. First of all, it's great hearing from our student athletes. I'm so glad they're joining us. My name is Rob Moore. My wife and I have two kids in high school at Western. We have a ninth grade daughter and a son, and a son who's a senior. First of all, I'd like to applaud the board in your decision this evening. You're so happy. With that being said, to Mrs. Lee's point earlier, not all of the winter sports are held in Alamo County public buildings. Some of them are held outside, and others, as you guys know, swim at the Y or elsewhere. And obviously, my comments this evening have changed somewhat. And also, first of all, I saw Coach Dan Bledsoe on here earlier. Thank you, Coach Bledsoe. My wife and I thank you and all the other coaches on here this evening for your efforts and taking care of our kids and continuing to support them. As you guys all know, virtual learning is breaking our kids. They're spent mentally and emotionally. It's isolating, physically and mentally exhausting. Honestly, it's just not engaging. They're not building those relationships that are much needed. They're not getting their social interactions, to put it bluntly. They do not feel a connection to the school community at all. We all know how this impacts a teenager's self-esteem, their confidence, and their drive to succeed. The happiest we have seen our daughter, who is on Dan's, Coach Dan's team, as a ninth grade at Western, the happiest that we've seen her in months was just a few nights ago after a practice outside during a dry land practice, when she was able to see some of her friends on that team that she hasn't seen in a year. And having that coach give her just a Western Alamo face mask, I cannot put into words how happy that made her and made her feel like she's a real part of something again. It meant so much to my wife and I to see that joy in her.
Thank you.
And I think for the board, am I done?
Yeah. It's the equivalent of the cade, I'm sorry. Those are great comments.
Thanks again.
I appreciate them. The next speaker, the next three speakers will be Jordan Solak, Jessica, I'm sorry, my handwriting's hard to read here, Ms. Laney, and Lisa Bendel. Oh, I'm sorry, and I skipped Matt Winkler. Matt Winkler, you are actually next. Those will be the three that are after you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for everybody's comments so far. I have an 11th grade student in the Whitehall District at Western. I have two kids also went to Western, and I have a daughter who teaches in Richmond currently. But firstly, thank you for deciding to decouple the sports from the return to Phase One. But secondly, I strongly urge you to bring back in-person learning as well. Early caution was understood, but we know enough now to reverse course. The risk of not going back presents our youth and families with irreparable consequences, some of those that some have already spoke about. I strongly urge you to open our schools for those who want to go back. There's enough information about the school reopenings in the world across the country. You see the negative effects of being closed far outweighs the realized risk of COVID. The recent Duke study in North Carolina, the recent New England Journal of Medicine study, which demonstrates that it's literally safer to be at school than most other places. Please give us the freedom to choose to go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. The next three comments, our speakers already announced, so Jordan Solak, if you are on. I do not see her name on the list.
She was part of the basketball team.
Was she? Thank you for noticing that, Ellen. The next speaker will be Jessica Maslaney. I see it now written, even though I couldn't read my own handwriting.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. So good evening, school board members. My name is Jessica Maslaney. I live in the Whitehall District. I have two children at Brownsville Elementary School. Andrew is in fourth grade and Megan is in second grade. I am also the CEO at the local YMCA. And as a community partner, we run virtual learning centers, supporting upwards of 300 children and students each day, mostly emergency childcare for low-income working families who do not have any other options. So I first wanted to thank you, Superintendent Haas, and the heroic administrators and teachers that have worked tirelessly to navigate a challenging pandemic. I recognize that none of you signed up for this. In my role as a parent and community partner, I wanted to respond to the recent announcement to return to stage one all virtual instruction and then proceed with week-to-week stage announcements, which in both roles does not give us adequate time to react and plan accordingly. I kindly request you to reconsider the week-to-week decision-making, identify a stage, define dates, and stick with it so we can plan and establish a routine. As a parent, when we filled out the initial surveys, my preference was and is still to return to in-school person learning with weighing the risks and rewards specific to my children. We elected the stage three hybrid option for my daughter for her return to school on November 10th. On November 30th, we received an email from the school that there was a presumed positive, not confirmed positive, and contrary to the existing policy, she would return to virtual learning for two weeks. She returned to hybrid learning on December 8th, and also on December 8th, we were notified that schools will return to stage one on December 14th. She returned to hybrid learning on December 5th, only to be told on January 13th that we would return to stage one on January 19th. During the second quarter, she has only attended nine days of in-person learning instruction. As an eight-year-old, she has had to navigate a complex and constantly changing schedule, never able to settle into a routine. As a community partner, we run early and virtual learning centers. On average, we serve 300 students each day across three sites and have done so since June. To date, we have had zero confirmed student cases and only two teacher cases, both resulting in outside exposures, and through existing safety protocols, did not transmit to other staff or students. Our challenge is that frequent movement between stages makes it very difficult for our staff to plan between synchronous and asynchronous learning and for us to maintain isolated pods of 10 children to limit cross-contact. It is also very disruptive for students and staff. It is affecting our staffing, and we cannot guarantee consistent employment past next week. As a parent and community member, we kindly request you to reconsider the week-to-week decision-making and identify stages by dates. It is almost impossible, planned and prevents a set schedule and routine, which helps ground us, especially children during unsettling times. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Maslaney. That was perfectly timed. The next speaker will be Lisa Bendel, or Bendel.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lisa Bendel. I live in the Samuel Miller District, and I proudly work at MHS. I have children at MHS, and I serve them as assistant athletic director. So I wear three hats in that building. I was going to address two concerns, but now thanks to the school board and their infinite wisdom, I now only need to have one concern. So I thank you very much for your consideration to decouple the sports and the stages of learning because it's so very important for these students to be able to get out of their house and to be able to exercise their minds and their hearts and be around students that are also with like-minded interests. As a parent of a junior, I am so very disappointed with the news of the 300 students who responded favorably to taking the PSAT and now are no longer allowed to do so, according to the protocols in place as of January 19th. The scholarship implications for those who qualify as a national merit scholar is immense, and with some colleges offering academic awards based solely on this accolade that are renewable every year, this is important. When will this date be changed, or will these students be able to take this test in time so that they can be considered for scholarship opportunities? The other issue I have with standardized testing is that as an educator, the inability for a senior who is trying to graduate early but needs to fulfill an SOL requirement, that is now lost. So how will this be addressed so that those seniors who want to graduate early can possibly do it when they take that SOL, which are now no longer able to be taken? I really do appreciate so very much the ability that you have allowed the students, the student athletes, and the students who are involved in extracurricular activities to go forth and finish what they have started this semester. The dangling of the carrot and then taking it away and then giving it back, that inconsistency which has been across the board tonight with the comments, I appreciate the fact that you have taken that out of the equation. So thank you very much. Before I go, one last thing I would like to say, and that was a comment that was made very early on tonight about how Monticello has thermometers and temperature control checks that are not working.
Ms. Bendel.
In inaccurate. I'm sorry, am I out of time?
Yeah, you're out of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Feel free to email that comment if you'd like.
I will, thank you very much.
The next three speakers are going to be Alex Friere, who I saw on, I believe, Elk Beaumont, and Hunter McCardle. Alex Friere, if you're on, I saw your name, but I didn't see.
I'm here.
There you are. Awesome. It's your turn to go.
Well, I was here to advocate for the continuation of sports, but since you have already allowed that, I'd just like to ask for some clarification because I don't play winter sports. I play fall and spring, and I just wanted to know what that decision means for like the conditionings of fall and spring sports.
Alex, it's not typically our policy to respond, but just since you got a minute and a half yet left, the answer is we don't know. The vote was specific to winter, we're going to look into it again in spring. And feel free to email as well for further updates if you would like.
All right, well, thank you for the decision.
Yep. The next speaker will be Elk, Elk Beaumont. And I see you. Hi. I forgot to say, I'll say it to you and I'll say it to the prior speaker. We always appreciate having students, and that's a good job.
Thanks. So, good evening. My name is Elk Beaumont, and I'm a high school junior and member of the Western Alamo Swim Team. I was also going to speak tonight in support of keeping winter activities active, but since you just voted to decouple the winter sports from those, from stage one learning, I wanted to thank you. So many of your students have been unmotivated due to depression, anxiety, and social isolation caused by online school and this pandemic, but being able to practice with the team and have something to motivate them and look forward to really fixes that. I know that my team and all the other teams at Western and all over the rest of the county are going to take all of the precautions to make sure that their sports can continue and future sports can also continue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be Hunter McCardle. Mr. McCardle, you're up.
Good evening. I'm Hunter McCardle. We live in the Samuel Miller District, and are parents of a student athlete, another swimmer at Western. First, I want to thank you for your time this evening and specifically for voting earlier to decouple winter sports and extracurricular activities from the phase one decision. Is athletics play a critical role in aiding mental, emotional, and physical health of a student? I'm not going to quote studies or statistics because we have firsthand experience of the mental health struggles that cancel their alter sports, schedules as calls during learner, some of their teammates and their families as well. But sports brings a sense of pride to students, coaches, parents, schools, and the surrounding community. Isolation compounds itself when sports are stripped. Many athletes lose not just their sport, but their drive for school and in some cases, life in general. Sports is often what defines them, and they feel all is lost when this sense of identity is stripped from them. Academic achievements and mental health are known to greatly enhance students who participates in school sports. The neighboring counties are continuing sports and remain despite virtual learning. Joshua Childs, an assistant professor at the University of Texas, wrote, "Sports are necessary for our communities. Coaches need their kids, kids need their coaches." It is true that coaches and kids need their community support, and their communities need their coaches and kids to do well. We heard from Coach Bledsoe earlier, I think Rob Moore had said it best. Our kids, his teammates, his students bring extreme joy to him, he brings extreme joy to them as well. It's a two-way street. I think you made a very wise decision this evening, and we thank you on behalf of all the students at Western.
Thank you for those comments, Mr. McCardle. The next three speakers will be Lauren Thompson, Jake King, and Debbie Stallings.
I did not see Lauren.
Yeah, I don't see her either. So we will move to Jake King, who I do see right here.
Hello, my name is Jake King, and I'm a junior at Alamo High School. I'm a member of the varsity football and lacrosse teams, and would like to take a minute to share my experience with Alamo Athletics and why having the upcoming fall and spring seasons are important to meeting my teammates. For us, there are no club options for football, and they are very limited for lacrosse. Our only outlet is through the school. I've been able to adapt to virtual learning this year by missing the competitiveness and social aspect of football and lacrosse. The thrill of games, getting ready to play your rival, the bus rides with your friends, the long punishing sprints, and getting yelled at by my coach, who is also my dad, are experiences that I'll never be able to get back after high school. The time my teammates and I have to practice together and play together is running out. Regardless of what stage we are in two weeks from now, I hope you will consider options for athletics, even if not at stage three. It is possible, and it is happening in surrounding counties within the state and nationally. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. King. And again, congratulations, I always love having students speak. This is like the most we've had, I think, ever. The next speaker will be Debbie, and I see her on right there.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Haas. Thank you for the work you do on behalf of our children, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a teacher. I've always been professional and responsible. Every day, I worry about my health, my family, my students and their families, my colleagues. Am I able to reach all of my students? Can I do the best job that I can do under these conditions? The economy, the country, and so many other things. Now, each Tuesday evening, I'm going to worry about what stage will be in the following week, every Tuesday night. Now, truthfully, I have no reason to stress or worry. I am a virtual teacher. I have 19,000 I have nineteen fabulous students. We have been together since November. But my colleagues and my friends who are hybrid teachers, you're asking them and the parents of every hybrid student to wonder and worry what stage they will be in the following week. Let's talk about some trauma and stress. Teachers and families have to make plans for children weeks by week, as one of our other speakers was talking about tonight. And that is a horrible burden to place on them. What is so wrong with following our city peers and setting a date? March eighth, earliest possible return to in-person education. Now, of course, our city peers are receiving their vaccinations in the next two weeks. We've been told that the earliest we'll receive our vaccinations as county teachers is early March. I implore you to rethink this week by week policy. I'm in survival mode, as are the majority of my peers and many of our families. We are doing the best we can, which is really quite remarkable. And so are our children, who are extremely remarkable. We want the best for our students and our families and our colleagues and our community, but we want to know that we're heard. We want to feel safe. We want to feel supported. We want to know that someone is advocating for us. We want proof that our lives matter. Vaccinate us before having us returned to the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Oh, I'm gonna list the next four speakers and then I will cycle through the ones that, that missed the first go around. So the last four on the list are Gabby Scarborough, Jessica Taylor, Haley Shiflett and Kristy Vaya. So Gabby Scarborough, let me look for that name real quick.
See her.
Okay. Okay, well, she'll get a chance in a few minutes. I'll call it out again. Jessica Taylor. Yep. Jessica, please go whenever.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Page, Dr. Haas and members of the board. My name is Jessica Taylor and I live in the Scottsville District. I'm a teacher at Clark Elementary School in the city, president of the Charlottesville Education Association and a proud parent of two ACPS graduates. As this pandemic has taken hold of our community, the polarity of the decisions being made and the process by which they are designed between CCS and ACPS has never been more apparent. We have say, seen an example just this week with the vaccine rollout. CCS teachers are going to start receiving the Moderna vaccine starting next week. This timeline should allow all of us who want the vaccine to be fully vaccinated before our return to face to face instruction on March eighth. While we are still concerned about students and asymptomatic spread, we are feeling more and more confident about the ability to return to our classrooms while still protecting our own safety and that of our loved ones. CCS teachers have confidence that our superintendent and school board have put the safety of teachers and the community at the center of our reopening plans, as well as their continued commitment to do so. This has allowed my colleagues and me to focus on teaching and building positive relationships with our students and families. I urge you to get your employees into the distribution queue as soon as possible so that they too can feel confident in your commitment to their safety. I urge you to listen to their concerns as you work on your reopening plan. Give them a seat at the table so that their perspective and their experience and work sites is capitalized on in building your vision for a return to in-person instruction. I urge you to take action now to repair any confidence and trust that has been damaged so that you can maintain the high quality and committed workforce I enjoy working alongside. Charlottesville and Almarle are truly one community. As such, there is no way we can get this pandemic under control until both systems offer the same level of protection for their residents and employees. It is only then that we can get children and families on the road to a new normal. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Taylor. The next speaker will be Haley Shiflett.
Hi, can you all hear me? Okay.
We can.
Okay. Hi, my name is Haley Shiflett. I'm a senior student athlete who plays softball and volleyball at Monticello High School. And like many others that have hopped on here tonight, I was gonna advocate for student athletes, for y'all to push the continuance of sports. And I just wanted to thank you for your vote earlier to decouple sports. It's a huge like part in our lives and it really helps with stress levels, self-esteem and social like aspects of our lives. And it is the one constant that we can have right now and it's definitely gonna be helpful that we're gonna be able to continue sports. Our athletic directors have been doing a great job of like keeping us safe and making sure that we're protected. So I'm sure that we'll continue and we'll be just fine. And I know that many other counties have been able to continue sports while in the all virtual setting and I hope that we'll follow suit as well. And thank you all again for having me and I appreciate your vote earlier.
Thank you, Ms. Shiflett. And a good, again, love seeing our students speak. Feel free to tell them to come speak. The last speaker on the initial list is gonna be Kristy Vaya and I see a KB.
Yep. That's me. Hi. District. I've got my eighth grader here with me. I just wanted to say thank you guys. I was calling or emailing in about the athletic being pulled away and follow the V H S L. We just wanna thank you. I wanna thank Ellen for reaching back out to my daughter for her email. And thank you for just taking our kids into consideration for their mental health and anxiety and stress and depression that they're going through. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments. So the list of miss speakers, I will just say once and if anyone's on, they could, they can, they can speak then. I have Bonnie Marty, Michelle Pitzoskos, Kyle Kirkide, Lauren Thompson, or Gabby Scarborough. And Ms. Powell, I know you had asked to be removed, so I, if you want to speak, you can, but now's the time. Okay. Not hearing any objections or seeing any of these people on. I will hand, hand it back to you, Chair Page.
Vice Chair Carlson. Very good job in taking care of the public comment. And again, we would like to announce for anybody who didn't miss it, that we have decoupled the stages from our sports for the winter. So I think a few of our speakers, again, probably weren't listening in when that happened, but we would like to reiterate that. Our next item agenda, spotlight on education, Mr. Dave Oberg, Mr. Oberg.
Thank you, Mr. Page. This fall is a nation we will be honoring and remembering one of the most stunning and transformational events, not just in American history, but in the history of the world. And I'm not talking about the Cleveland Browns advancing in the playoffs. I am, of course, speaking of the attack on Pearl Harbor, which took place nearly eighty years ago on the morning of December seventh, nineteen forty-one, when more than twenty-four hundred Americans lost their lives. It is not hyperbole to state that the events of that day impacted the lives of every American alive at that time and born since. Among the people who lost their lives that morning was a former student at Meriwether Lewis in Almarle County, First Lieutenant Bernard Harlow, who was twenty-four years old when he gave his life for his country. Today, we are able to remember Lieutenant Bernard's, or Harlow's sacrifice because of the work of one of our outstanding students, Ms. Virginia Pang, who herself is a former Meriwether Lewis student. Virginia and the work she accomplished as part of National History Day. Each day, National History Day offers research opportunities. Each year, National History Day offers research opportunities to teachers and students around a different theme. In twenty twenty, the theme was Silent Heroes. Sponsored by Hawaiian Museums, last year's challenge was to identify local community members who lost their lives at Pearl Harbor. Silent heroes not widely known or celebrated and to provide them with the recognition that they earned. Students from across the country were empowered to search public and family records, historical archives, media reports and interviews to learn to know their silent hero as if he or she was their own family member. Sixteen teachers and scholars from across the country were chosen on the basis of the excellence of their work to travel to Pearl Harbor this coming June. There, in a solemn ceremony that will be livestreamed, Virginia Pang will deliver a long delayed eulogy for Lieutenant Harlow. We have with us this evening the remarkable Western Almarle teacher who counseled Virginia, as well as our outstanding student herself. Elizabeth Mulcahy is going to briefly tell us about the incredible professional development benefits offered by National History Day and how it impacts the work she does in and outside of the classroom. Ms. Mulcahy will then also introduce to, introduce us to Virginia, whom we have asked to share some of Lieutenant Harlow's story, how this project has affected her as a person and learner, and most important perhaps, how it speaks to all of us, still relevant, nearly eighty years after Lieutenant Harlow gave his life for his country. Ms. Mulcahy.
Thank you, Mr. Oberg and thank you to the board for having us this evening. I cannot stress enough the opportunity to just convey the importance of teaching the social studies right now in our community and in our world. And this program, the National History Day Program, is a, is a nationwide program. I was introduced to it at the National Council for the Social Studies Convention over ten years ago, which Almarle County sponsored us to get to go to. And this program has really transformed my teaching from one of just content to one of passion and skills based on research and communication. And the ability for students to tackle an argument and support that with legitimate research and supporting evidence that many times they won't even get to experience until maybe graduate school. And so the National History Day Program is one that does give an opportunity for students to design program, to design projects on a year-long basis, on a topic of their interest around a given theme. They produce these projects and present them in the way that fits them best, from documentaries to websites, performances, exhibits and papers. And for the last nine years, I'm proud to say our Western Almarle students have competed at the division, state and national level with their projects and have just totally stunned me as, as a teacher. And, and it's stayed with them. Just two days ago, I had an email from a student who is in her second or third year in college and in a J-term course. And she was emailing me because she was like, do you happen to have a picture of my group exhibit project that I can share with my course on protest and media? And with my J-term professor and I was able to share that with her. And so that's a, it's a research element of, that teachers can implement in their classrooms that any and every student can take part of. That's what the majority of the program's about. But National History Day, under the genius generous contributions of many different museums and organizations around the country, also provide professional development opportunities for teachers and students. For teachers, I've been able to take courses in World, World War One, World War Two and interact with other teachers from around the globe even. And through that, I learned of this program. It's called Sacrifice for Freedom: Recognizing Silent Heroes. And in the past, National History Day has taken teachers and students to Normandy to recognize fallen soldiers in Europe. Last year, I saw the opportunity that National History Day kind of sends out for applications so that students and teacher pairs can do research on a local silent hero and then have the opportunity to study more about World War Two in the Pacific by actually going to Pearl Harbor in Hawaii. I put out this opportunity to our Social Studies Honor Society at Western Almarle and a former student of mine, Virginia Ping, who actually did a National History Day project on the revolutions in China when she was a sophomore. She reached back out to me last year as a junior and said, I would love to try out for this opportunity. And so Virginia put together an amazing application that I supported and was submitted to the National History Day Committee. And we were selected as one of the teacher-student pairs out of a hundred and twenty-nine applications. We were selected to be one of the sixteen teams. And so our journey began last spring where Virginia and I took in-depth courses, me with all the fifteen other teachers and Virginia with the fifteen other students on the history of Hawaii and the history of the war in the Pacific. So it was just amazing to connect to, you know, teachers in fourteen other states and the American Samoa. And for Virginia to do the same, we continued our research and Virginia narrowed it down to Lieutenant Harlow, which she'll talk more about. And this continued throughout the year. We were supposed to go last June and then this past December to Hawaii, to Pearl Harbor. It has been, continued to push off, but we are now supposed to go again this upcoming June. Thanks to wonderful grants from amazing museums like the USS Missouri Memorial Museum, which is the battleship where seventy-five years ago, this upcoming September, World War Two ended. That's the battleship where the peace treaty between Japan and the US was signed. And Virginia and I will get the opportunity to actually spend the night on that ship. And so, you know, thanks to these museums and the National History Day Program, we're getting an amazing research experience and just connections with other teachers around the globe. I'm gonna introduce Virginia now. She is a senior at Western Almarle High School. I got the pleasure of teaching her in ninth grade as a, as a freshman and continued on with her historical studies. She's also passionate about the sciences and in everything she does from cross-country to her beautiful artwork. But she, in this kind of crazy time, she has done the most to take advantage of opportunities like this. And so I'm gonna let Virginia talk a little bit more about her research and her eulogy and what recognizing a lost serviceman from Almarle County has meant to her. So, Virginia?
Thank you so much, Mrs. Mulcahy. I have to say that without Mrs. Mulcahy's support, I don't think it would have been possible for us to get selected, you know, as, as nationwide. And Mrs. Mulcahy, ever since freshman year, she has really inspired me to learn with her genuine passion as an educator, as well as her curiosity for learning itself. And so, you know, starting off with the project, like Ms. Mulcahy said, we did a lot of learning and modules online and discussions. And then our, our task was to pick a silent hero and a fallen soldier from the Pacific Theater in World War Two, which is what this program focuses on. And he, and that serviceman would be from our home state. And so for us, it's Virginia. And so during the research, definitely one thing that was special about Lieutenant Harlow was he attended the same elementary school that I had, Meriwether Lewis. And so that kind of caught my eyes at first. And then through a little bit more research, you know, I realized that he was a banker and he lived in Ivy, which is also very close to my home as well. And, you know, from, from a farm family, he really had a very normal life going on until the day that, that, you know, war erupted and, and, and his life changed and his family's life changed as well because he actually had three other siblings who were also in the army and, and the air force. So Lieutenant Bernard Harlow joined the air force and attended a Hobbs Army Airfield Training School to become a bombardier. And he later joined the Eleventh Bombardment Group and really was in the Central Pacific. And he accomplished many missions against the Japanese, including the Truck Island missions and a lot of island hopping as well. And so, so being able to, well, first of all, we, the, the research broke down into early life, home front and military life. And so for, for early life, I was able to connect with a lot of local librarians and historians, newspaper journalists and even possible family members. So that was a learning experience because being able to reach out to people one-on-one and talking about the specifics of his early life. And then the home front research was more focused on Virginia and Charlottesville. And then the home front research was more focused on Virginia and Charlottesville in general. And so through that, I was able to kind of do more readings, Virginia farmers at war, you know, the Civil Defense, and the State Militia in Virginia during World War II, and digging, you know, the UVA archives. And so there's really a lot of resources out there that normally I probably would not have even thought of exploring. And the bulk of the research is on military life. And so using Ancestry and National Archives and many other resources, I was able to collect important information on his enlistment, training, promotions, missions, and his contributions during his time in service. And so, so I think especially from this experience, I've really learned about, you know, there's so many, there's so many silent heroes who are just like Bernard, Lieutenant Bernard Harlow, who were willing to sacrifice their lives for our nation and for the greater good. And especially today, for me personally, it really reminds me of, you know, where we are today and to really appreciate what we have today and where we, where we are. And not forgetting about the lessons that we learn from history, especially during, during today's time with, with many tensions in various corners of the world. And, you know, from the seventy-five years of peace since nineteen forty-five, despite regional conflicts. It's a very precious time and important for economic corporations and peaceful development, which is, I believe, something that is very important for our generation to understand and focus on. Because war is, in my opinion, never the effective in the most productive way to resolve conflicts. And yeah, and also, we, Mrs. Mulcahy and I are able to go to Hawaii this summer, which, fingers crossed, will happen, since it's already been postponed twice. And I think that it's really going to be a lifelong experience in a lifetime memory to be able to honor our serviceman Lieutenant Bernard Harlow at the Harlow Memorial and be reading my eulogy and being, being able to honor, I guess, not only Lieutenant Bernard Harlow, but all of the servicemen from World War II. It's, yeah, really special. And I'm really honored to be here and be able to participate with this project along with Mrs. Mulcahy. Thank you. Oh, and also, we are still in need of a picture of Lieutenant Harlow I wanted to mention. So if anyone, no one in Harlow, so, you know, just being able to ask around and reach out, that's something that we're really hoping to find.
Yeah, we want pictures of you on the Missouri.
Oh, oh, my God.
Too cool.
Yeah.
Can we answer any questions about the program or the experience for anyone? I'm hoping once we, next year, we can spread the National History Day Program even, even more so for, for kids throughout the county. So, thank you, guys, again, for letting us share. And even though it is definitely not the tops of it, the Browns and the Bills, we are excited about this, which hasn't really happened in quite a few decades as well.
Congratulations to you both. We'd love to hear about your trip when you come back.
I just wanted to say it was wonderful hearing about something that was just so positive about our, both our teachers and our students. We have a lot of other more challenging things on our plate. But also, I was, and perhaps Ms. Ping has already answered the question. I was interested in the feedback you've had from the Harlow family about this project, whether they've seen your report, et cetera.
Yeah, no, unfortunately, I've really, really tried reaching out and, you know, Googling, searching, even, you know, stalking on, you know, if there's any possible connections. But unfortunately, I have not been able to talk one-on-one with someone who have the materials and resources that I'm looking for. So, so, yeah, so that's one of our hopes.
Lieutenant Harlow didn't get to have a family before he went off to war. And so where we've been searching through is through his brothers that survived, through their grandchildren is kind of where we've been now looking, which are not in the, necessarily in the area. So that's, that's been one of the toughest parts, is not having that family connection right away so close. So, you know, at least we're hoping to be able to continue this story on.
This is really impressive work and impressive in taking history to a really productive, I mean, as you said, more than content, it's, it's an activity.
Right. Are there any other questions? Thanks. Virginia, given how much research you've done with this, what's your future aspirations or have you decided on any fields? Because your work here has really been impressive.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I mean, you know, throughout my, I'm a senior, so my college application process has definitely been, been considering, you know, what I want to major in and what I want to do. And again, this, this, this project has really touched me and made me think about how destructive and catastrophic war is, you know, both a physical war, but also cold wars as well. And so for me, I think I would really like to be able to push for that more peaceful development and economic progress, since I would like to personally maybe major in economics. And then my personal interest is also in East Asian Studies and China specifically. Like Mrs. Mulcahy said, that I've done research on China, because I've actually spent ten years of my life in Beijing, China. And so that has really, I guess, prompted me to be able to connect with my heritage and my family history, and I've always been fascinated. And, and, you know, be able to, I guess, become, to be able to bridge the gaps between the US and China, and especially in a time today. So I think it's, that's probably what I'd like to do.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Ms. Mulcahy or Virginia, Ms. Ping?
Ms. Ping, have you kept up your chess game?
Oh, my goodness. You know, definitely not as competitive player as I was when I was younger, but I've been actually, you know, tutoring some young kids and teaching them chess. And that has been very rewarding to be able to share what I love with others. So, yeah.
Wow. So you are multi, multi-multi-talented, right?
Yes, I have a quite broad range of interests. So, but...
Okay, Ms. Mulcahy, keep in killing of your name. But thanks so much for being here and thanks for all that you do for all of our students. So thank you both so very, very much. Are there any other questions, though, before they leave us? Okay, if not, thank you both so very much for this. All right. Announcements, do we have any announcements? Dr. Haas?
I do not have any announcements at this time.
All right. All right, moving down then to our school division business.
Can I make a point of personal privilege? We're supposed to have a break at eight forty-five. Can we take the break?
Okay, well, is there any objection to modifying our agenda again and taking the break now at eight forty-five?
I'm in support of that, and thank you for bringing it up.
Enthusiastic support.
Okay, so we'll take a fifteen-minute break. We convene at nine o'clock.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, it is nine o'clock. So we are back on the clock. Dr. Haas is, is Dr. Haas back on with?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, okay. Related to some of the comments made earlier, Dr. Haas is going to make a, an announcement. So, Dr. Haas.
Thank you, Mr. Page. I just think it's really important to clear up that there's been no lagging or negligence on the part of the Alamo County Schools Administration, or the local government of Alamo County, or the Blue Ridge Health District, as, as we heard earlier. We are all following the procedures according to the timelines that we were provided. I do see Ryan McKay has shown up for his segment of the meeting. Ryan, I didn't know, since you're here, I was going to read the contents of the email you sent earlier with regard to some school systems signing up their 1B people when that wasn't the intention. I don't know if you would mind saying something about that, because right now, I feel like we've got a lot of teachers that think that Alamo County Schools has let them down by not being in the same place as the city.
Yeah, of course, Matt. We definitely did not intend for uploads of not only the city schools, but other organizations in Phase 1B to begin before there was opportunity for everybody to access that. And so it was not our intent. It occurred at a time that was really well before we were even prepared to make any announcements about Phase 1B, particularly with the governor's announcement today with some expansions. And so that timing is certainly unfortunate. The schools, the administration for Alamo County did everything they had been doing, had been asked to do, and were, were following guidance that we had provided. And so we certainly take some responsibility, obviously, in this, as clearly our messaging wasn't, wasn't as strong as it needed to be about the timelines. But this was not the fault of the county administration, school administration, and certainly, while unintentional, it puts us in a position where we now have to move a little more quickly in terms of finalizing some plans and how we're going to provide greater access, not just for the community, but for, for school employees and government employees.
I really appreciate you saying that, Mr. McKay, and I hope you understand that it's my, I feel the same way about the Blue Ridge Health District. You all have been doing amazing heavy lifting and really trying to coordinate a massive effort. And I've seen you out under the tent, helping with the vaccinations, and I've seen you, seems like every time we have a, a call, you're, you're in a different location, trying to make sure things go right. And I really appreciate you clearing that up, because the most important thing for us is the school system, is the health and safety of our, our, our staff and our students and their families. And I just don't want anyone to think that we, in some way, weren't following the guidelines. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Of course.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McKay and Dr. Haas. Right now, getting back to our agenda, we'll have the FY 2019-20 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by Mr. Zimmerman, and he's really in a place that's awkward for him, because usually he's at the end of the agenda, but tonight, he's not at the end. So, Mr. Zimmerman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Page. I'm Jackson Zerem, I'm your school finance officer. Appreciate being first on the agenda this evening. That is a, an unusual spot for me to be in. Wanted to present for you the, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR. We will actually be having Mr. Josh Roller, who is with Robinson Farmer Cox Associates, an audit firm that's based here in Alamo County, and also performs the vast majority of audits across the entire Commonwealth. Josh is a 13-year member of Robinson Farmer Cox and is a partner, and he is here tonight to present the fiscal year 2020 CAFR.
All right. Good evening, members of the board. As Jackson just introduced me, my name is Josh Roller. I know you guys have had a long meeting already and still some more to go, so I'll keep it as brief as possible. The audit and all related issues have already been discussed with the full audit committee back in November in great detail. So if there are any additional questions that come up, feel free to interrupt me or ask me at the end. But from that, we'll kind of get into it pretty quickly here. And I'll go by the page numbers at the bottom of the page, not the PDF page numbers, to hopefully avoid some confusion. Starting on page one of the audit report, this is our auditor's opinion, where we have issued an unmodified opinion, which means we believe the financial statements are fairly stated on a material basis for the year 2020. Flipping forward a few pages onto page 23, pages 23 and 24, these are your Exhibit 1, Exhibit 2, your entity-wide statements. These are your financial statements on a full accrual basis. They include all your long-term assets, all your long-term liabilities, in addition to your, your regular fund accounting, which are further on into the report we'll get to. The, the bulk of the report is in the footnote to the financial statements. I'll point your attention to two pages in there that might be of interest to you. On page 60 is the capital asset note related to the school board. Just from comparing last year's any balance to this year's any balance of capital assets, the total capital assets net of accumulated depreciation increased from 67.1 million up to 71 million. The next one on page 66, this is your long-term obligation note of the school board. Again, this also increased, this increased from around 194 million up to 214 million. The large majority of this increase has to do with the net pension liability and net OPEV liabilities that are all based off of actuaries that kind of come up with these reports and these numbers that are based highly on estimates. Probably the most useful couple pages of the entire report there start on page 150. This is your school operating fund, your food service fund, and your school capital projects fund. On the, on the budgetary basis, this is Exhibit 41, there's your balance sheet for the year for those three major funds. Exhibit 43, two pages later, is your current year activity of those funds. And then Exhibit 45 is the same information as Exhibit 43, it's your current year and for current year activity of all those funds, but it also just includes budgetary numbers for comparison. And then the last couple of things here on page 177, this is our auditor's report in accordance with governmental auditing standards. This is where we're saying we had no matters that need to be disclosed related to internal controls over financial reporting. The next two pages later, 179, this is our auditor's report over the uniform guidance compliance. Uniform guidance is what kind of governs the federal compliance part of the audit. And again, here, we had no matters that need to be disclosed related to our, our federal single audit work. And then the last part that I'll point your attention to on page 181 through 183, this is your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. It shows all the, for the county and the school board, all of the federal expenditures for the year. At the bottom of 183, it breaks out just the school board portion of that. The school board federal expenditures for the year total $8.64 million. And that was a very brief summary there. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Roller? From the board? Any questions?
Not a question, but thank you, you and your entire team do for us. And thank you for coming in every year to, to give us this report.
Absolutely. Thank you all for having me.
Mr. Roller has always been a, a pleasure to work with.
And that goes both ways for all the staff there at the county. They're very helpful. It's a lot that goes into producing this report on both sides, and it takes a lot from, from the staff down there as well.
Okay, Mr. Roller, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Zimmerman, for helping us with that part of the, of our agenda. So, thank you both. All right, our next item, our COVID-19 update, Dr. McLaughlin and Mrs. Gomez.
Hi, good evening, board members. I'm Pat McLaughlin, Chief of Strategic Planning for the School Division, and I'm here tonight to give you an update on our COVID-19 status. As you know, the board has, we have six factors that determine our progression from one stage to another during the COVID pandemic. And at the board's request, every meeting, we update you on one of those metrics, which is the current COVID-19 conditions in the Alamo County region and within Alamo County schools. And so I will turn things over now to Eileen Gomez to take us through the latest metrics that we have.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. You could see here that, and you probably are aware, that the numbers in Charlottesville, Alamo, the surrounding area, the state and the country have all seen an increase recently, both in the case incidents and in the percent positivity. You can see from these numbers that there's been a, an increase, well, all year really. We saw a, an surge after Thanksgiving, and then there was somewhat of a decline, and then the numbers have been rising again since the winter holidays. You see that Monday at 50.7, we were higher than we are on Friday, but the overall trend, I mean, Thursday, the overall trend has been increasing. If we move to Charlottesville, you can, oh, here's Alamo's percent positivity has also been increasing. These are on the floating seven-day average. Charlottesville, their metrics are quite similar. They've been seeing an increase in this time. And then we had, for the seven-day floating average, last week, we had a couple of really big days of reports, which is why Mondays was higher than Thursdays, but the, the overall numbers and trends have been increasing. The percent positivity for Charlottesville is a little bit lower here, as you can see. And Mr. Leike, who spoke earlier, who made the comments about UVA and the impact of their testing having an impact on our percent positivity, which we are aware of, and we take that into advisement. And these are the CDC core indicators, ones we showed you before were the seven-day floating average. But these numbers in red are the 14-day cumulative total, and that is what the CDC uses to assign these risk categories. You can see that our, our 14-day cumulative total has been increasing, and that's true throughout the state. You'll see that if you go on the Virginia Department of Health's website. And the percent positivity over the last 14 days, that's an average, has moved us into the higher-risk categories here by, as identified by the CDC. That's for Alamo. And then, Dr. McGoughlin, will you go over these mitigations?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Eileen. So, so as you know, we set some, some thresholds for returning to Stage 1 of instruction, and those were to be at the highest risk of transmission for the case incidence rate, and the higher risk of transmission for the percent positivity, and to be at both of those metrics for seven consecutive days. We have been there for five consecutive days at this time, but with, but we're anticipating that they aren't, are not, neither one of those is going to come down below the threshold in the next two days. And because of that, we made the decision to, to move to Stage 1 of our return-to-school program. A couple of other pieces of information that I wanted to make you aware of with our, is our, our COVID dashboard has been enhanced, even since the last time I spoke to some board members about that. One of the, some of the feedback that we heard about the COVID dashboard, if you'll recall, the original dashboard just had a listing of the number of cases that had ever taken place in Alamo and separated those out by students and employees and contractors. One of the things that we heard from, from members of the public and the, and our school stakeholders was that it was hard to tell how long that data had been there. So we've added a couple of enhancements. The first is a chart that shows confirmed COVID cases over time. And so this looks week by week, beginning back on August 31st, at the number of cases we've seen in the division, and it separates those out by students, staff, and contractors. We also thought it was important to look at the number of cases as they occurred at each location. How many cases had individual schools and individual departments experience since the beginning of the year? So the second stacked bar shows that by location. We continue to have our full COVID dashboard, and what we've added to that are the dates on which those, those cases took place. So you can see here, Monticello had one of our, our first reported cases on the dashboard. That was a staff member the week of August 31st. Henley had a contractor the week of September 7th and on down the line. One of the things this does is it gives the, the public a little bit better idea of whether that case is still an active case, or how long it's been since a case has been there. Previously, we would have just seen that there was a case at Monticello, or there was a case at Henley, and we did not have dates associated with them. And then finally, one, one last enhancement that we have is our current quarantine status. This just got added to the, to the COVID outbreak, or the COVID dashboard today, and this is going to be our, our running total of students and staff who are currently under quarantine due to positive, positive COVID tests. And you can see that currently, we have three staff members at Sutherland who are in that category. So we, we feel like that's an enhancement all around for, for what we're being, how we're being transparent with the public. And we know that one of the things that's, that's been on just about everybody's mind lately is the status of vaccine distribution in Alamo County. And I want to thank Ryan McKay for being here again tonight. I know he was able to, to talk to the board briefly right when we came out of break, but I wanted to give him some time, Ryan. If there's anything else you'd like to share with the board about where we are with vaccination plans for K-12 employees in Alamo, that would be great.
Yes, of course. So we, for right now, are in Phase 1A, and we'll be moving to Phase 1B officially within the next week. Announcements about that, with more specific details will be provided tomorrow morning from our team. And so, and one of our approaches that we're working on with the county schools, county government, and somewhat in partnership with Unified Command from the city and the county, is an approach that would utilize and leverage resources from local government, the schools, and certainly from the Health District, to develop what we call points of dispensing for employees of the county and of the government, and also for teachers. And the idea is that we would increase capacity by having school nurses get trained to vaccinate and approved for vaccination per our VDH guidelines, and then work with the county to recruit and identify those from the EMS services who could also vaccinate. What this does for us is, obviously, provides one of the core groups within Priority 1B with access to vaccine. But I think more importantly for the community is that it relieves a lot of the stress from our current location and other locations that we developed for access to the vaccine, providing more appointments for the community at large in Phase 1B. So all of this would be happening concurrently, and is an approach that we're working on with other schools throughout our district. The idea is that we want to move as quickly as we can, but also be efficient with the resources that we have available to us, while also leveraging resources that exist throughout the county and across our district, to try to move as quickly as possible and getting more access to the um, to try to move as quickly as possible, um, and getting more access to the vaccine.
So, thanks for that, Ryan. And, and just a couple of, um, uh, more points I wanted to, to bring to the board's attention before we open up for questions or comments. Uh, when we moved to Stage 1, we heard someone in public comment tonight talk about the impact on the PSAT test, and, and that is impacting our PSAT test. Um, and one of the, one of the, uh, things that's been weighing on our minds is that PSAT testing is tied to eligibility for National Merit Scholarships. However, I spoke with, uh, somewhere at the National Merit Scholarship Corporation today, and they actually have a, an alternate means of becoming qualified for that. Uh, and that is open to all students, uh, so long as they're able to take an SAT test prior to June, uh, June 2021. So we've got our fingers crossed that, uh, that, you know, we're going to see more SAT testing centers opening up in the future and that students will be able to, to take advantage of that. Uh, the second comment that came up was about fall graduates, students who are planning on graduating at the end of this month and needing SOL tests. Uh, and there are about 11 students, um, who are impacted by that, who are going to take an SOL test. They need to graduate at the end of the month. Um, and, uh, India Han, our Division Director of Testing, uh, immediately started, uh, looking, uh, for those kids from the, uh, working with the principals and our testing coordinators. And I've been working with Dr. Haas on developing a plan to make sure those kids have an opportunity to do that, um, even if we're in Stage 1. So, so I think we've, hopefully found ways to address both of those issues. And, and would be happy to, um, to open up for questions, comments about the, um, the COVID update.
Um, I, I just wanted to commend your work on the, um, the dashboard. I think having the current quarantine status is really helpful. I think, cause it's hard to keep up with what's going on right now. And then also having it listed, um, historically and also broken out by group and broken out by school is really helpful. So I really think that that's, that's really good work. So thank you.
And I'll give a, um, kudos both to Eileen and to Jennifer Butler, uh, who have really been, um, working diligently to, to get that up and running.
There are other questions for, um, Dr. McLaughlin or Ms. Gomez, or Mr. McKay?
Mr. McKay. As I understand it, the reason that many of the Charlottesville teachers got on the vaccination list was that the Charlottesville schools mistakenly, uh, uploaded both 1A and 1B candidates. But even having that, you know, um, I guess my question is, we also had some teachers raising the issue that they would not be vaccinated until March. And in our earlier meeting this week, I thought, uh, you had a earlier, much earlier estimate than that.
So I think our timeline was somewhere, worst-case scenario would be March, but that we were really pushing for, um, sometime in February to be able to provide access to the vaccine. And now we're trying to increase that. Um, and make that, I wouldn't say before the end of the month, but certainly push faster to, um, um, speed up that timeline.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Kay, does this timeline also include, um, or your planning also include second doses?
Planning does include second doses. So thinking about where we are, um, in our timelines and, and we sort of map that out as we're going through, um, our weekly planning process, um, and also as it relates to ordering, so that, um, we make sure that we're, um, maintaining our, our inventory levels as such to, um, accomplish both goals. Uh, the one thing that does do, the federal government does do is it sets aside the second dose. So if we were to over, for example, if we're ordering 2,000 doses in a week, it would set aside those 2,000 doses for, um, uh, the second, uh, vaccine administration for each individual that receives it.
Are there other questions?
Just thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McKay and Dr. McLaughlin and Ms. Gomez.
Thank you all. Thank you.
And next item, um, Stage 4 Planning Update and Return to School Recommendation, uh, Dr. Haas.
All right, so I'm gonna keep, uh, Dr. McLaughlin in the queue here.
All right, thanks, uh, thanks, Dr. Haas. Um, so, uh, thank you, board members. We'd like to bring you a, a few updates on Stage 4 tonight. Um, a few things in particular that we want to share with you are the results of our intent forms for Stage 4. Um, also along with those come, uh, some information on staff accommodation requests. What Stage 4 might look like, uh, any, any shifts in that for when we do, uh, make the recommendation to do that. And then Dr. Haas is gonna bring you a recommendation for a revised timeline for a decision on Stage 4. So up first is the results of our, um, Stage 4 Intent Form. Detailed results of each school and grade level are attached to the board item tonight, if people are interested in looking at that. But in our Stage 4 Intent Form, we asked families, uh, when we begin Stage 4, will your child participate in face-to-face instruction or remain fully virtual? Uh, you can see here that we had a, a really robust, uh, response, and that's due in large part to the, uh, the yeoman's work our, uh, our school staff did to reach out to families. Uh, our elementary schools came in with, we have 99.3% of our students accounted for there, and 61, just over 61% of those chose hybrid instruction. Uh, there is a wide range there from about 49% to 75% uh, among our elementary schools. In our secondary schools, we had a similarly high response rate of over 99% and a slightly, uh, smaller selection of hybrid instruction with just under 55% choosing to come back for face-to-face hybrid. And again, that, uh, that range varied from about 45% to about 68%. Uh, I know the board is also interested in demographics as we are, so, uh, I included a couple of tables here, uh, that showed first for our elementary schools, our responses by demographic group. So of all of our Asian students, how many of them chose hybrid versus virtual? And for, um, and this breakdown of respondents is similar to what you see in our Equity Dashboard, where we look at, uh, how these different groups make up, uh, our total school population. And then we compare that to, uh, how many are going to make up our hybrid population in our virtual population. Um, if you recall from Stage 3, these numbers were, were pretty well-aligned, and we are seeing, uh, generally, uh, alignment here. But there'll be two things that I, that I point out to you. In our elementary school, we are seeing a bit of a discrepancy with our African-American population. Uh, they make up 11.4% of our population and 8.2% of our hybrid, 16.4% of our virtual students. When we look at the secondary numbers, uh, you see a, a similar discrepancy that's actually a little bit, uh, a little bit wider there. Uh, our African-American students make up 10.7% of our po- total population for secondary and 6.7% of our hybrid population. And so, and so that's something important for us to consider. Right now, uh, it, you know, if we were to, to ask the question why that's happening, it would be just speculation. Um, but we're trying to figure out some ways we might dig a little bit deeper into that to see why, uh, groups chose, uh, the way they did. So hopefully we can, we can find a little bit more information on that. So what students wanted to do was a big part of, of Stage 4, uh, and how we can, what we can offer to students when they come back. Uh, a second, uh, piece of this puzzle that's also crucial is staff accommodations. And so I'd like to introduce Dr. Kaiser to talk a little bit about what we're seeing there.
Thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. And what you see before you is the number of requests that have made, been made for virtual accommodations. Um, as you know, having enough staff to staff a school in each of our sta- stages is one of our metrics. When you look at the numbers here, you see the, the percentage breakdown as well, based on elementary, middle, high school and the support services, um, directly, uh, focused on the, on working in the schools. Um, and when I look at, and the thing I would, I would, uh, share with you about this is these are raw numbers. Um, these are not necessarily, all of the people that you see who made a request will not necessarily, um, have that approved. The thing that drives whether or not a decision to honor a request is, uh, very much dependent on what the students requested. So that number of virtual and the number of hybrid students coming in will really drive the, uh, those decisions. The other thing that we're looking at is recognizing that each time we stages, we change a stage, there is disruption to students. And so we're really trying to minimize that along the way as well. And so, um, we are working with our principals right now as they are doing planning for Stage 4. And as we're going through that, we're determining whether or not we are going to be able to honor requests or not. Um, we are hopeful that for, just, when we, we, we had the same thing occur in Stage 3, and we had many of those people whose requests were denied, uh, decide to come into our schools, and we're hoping for the same with Stage 4. Uh, one of the things that we know is that as more students come in, obviously there's less opportunity for that virtual, uh, teaching, uh, oper- it's, it's, uh, but, but the number of virtual teachers that we need is, are reduced. Sorry about that. Um, and so, but, so for those people who are not able to be accommodated, uh, we, uh, we really hope they'll come in. We hope that we will see our community's health improving along the way. Um, and obviously, we've talked about the vaccine tonight, and we're hoping that we will have, uh, that, uh, on that running before we hit go. So, um, anyway, so I just wanted to share those numbers with you.
Thanks, Dr. Kaiser. So, so those two pieces of the puzzle were really crucial in determining, um, uh, what we can offer for our students in terms of how, how many days per week they're able to come into our schools, particularly in our elementary schools. And as you can see from this chart, uh, with the numbers that we have, when we return to Stage 4, when the metrics allow that, uh, we're going to be able to have pre-K through third-grade students in four days a week. That's a, uh, an increase from what we have currently in Stage 3 with pre-K through 2. Uh, 4th and 5th grade students, uh, would, would still be coming in two days per week, um, due primarily to, uh, to the number of students who are returning and the impact that has on space and our ability to have proper mitigation strategies, uh, in our schools. And so with that said, I wanna, um, turn things back over to, to Dr. Haas to speak a little bit about, um, his recommendation for our next steps.
Thank you very much, Dr. McLaughlin. I, uh, I really appreciate all the hard work that has taken place at the, the school level with our, with our support staff, our teachers, our administrators and central office staff working together on these plans. I, I really appreciate it. Um, as, as we've, uh, been talking quite a bit about, uh, in terms of our community numbers right now, it's, uh, I, I do not see it as a good time to make a recommendation, uh, uh, for the third marking period in terms of moving us to Stage 4. Uh, what I, what I do recommend and what I would like board approval for is to allow us, rather than tying the decision-making process to a nine-weeks period or to a quarter, that we would, um, make the recommendation when it's the right time. It would be a recommendation to the school board. Uh, this is not a decision-making process, obviously, based on uh, the way we've been doing things. This is not a decision that I would make, uh, unilaterally. Remember, I only can make a decision unilaterally when it's to drop back to Stage 1, uh, when the, when the numbers, um, are doing what they're doing right now. Recommendations to advance in stages would only be made, uh, by making a recommendation to the board. And I feel that because we have done such a, uh, you know, such a great, uh, deal of planning in terms of, uh, getting intent forms from families as well as our staff and doing all that preliminary planning, that we, uh, could rapidly deploy, uh, to Stage 4, uh, more quickly than we move to Stage 3, because a lot of the groundwork is already done. I'm gonna ask Dr. McLaughlin to lay out, uh, what that looks like.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Haas. So, so as, um, as Dr. Haas said, operationally, we're ready to, to move to Stage 4. Thanks in, in large part to the work, um, uh, both our operations staff and our school staff have done, um, with the Stage 4 planning. And so a Stage 4 Decision Timeline would, would look something like this, that, um, whenever, uh, Dr. Haas feels it's, it's appropriate to make a recommendation, he would come before the board and do that, and we would consider that Week 0. Uh, the following week, we would ask the board to take action on that. Uh, should the board decide that, uh, move to Stage 4 as warranted, um, the following week, Week 2, would be final planning and mobilization of, uh, just about everything. Uh, food service, transportation, uh, all of those pieces of the puzzle. In Week 3, we would have what we're referring to as a soft start. Uh, one of the things that we heard, uh, loud and clear from, from teachers is that whenever we do move to this stage, they need a bit of time to get ready for it. They haven't been in their classrooms, or if they've been in their classrooms, they haven't been ready for in-person students, um, there. And so we are recommending that Monday and Tuesday of that week be asynchronous learning days with no students in our schools. And that time would be used by teachers to, uh, to prepare classrooms for students later in the week. On Wednesday and Thursday, we would bring back all of our pre-K through 5 students who are returning in Stage 4, but we would continue to have a soft start at the secondary level, uh, bringing back just 6th grade and 9th grade on those days. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Uh, one is that our secondary schools have not had the critical mass that our elementary schools have in Stage 3 of students coming in. They, uh, you know, this will give them a chance to get routines down with temperature checks and health screenings and, uh, and lunches and dismissals and things like that. The other is that, as I'm sure you're aware, our 6th graders and our 9th graders have never been, uh, in there in the school buildings. They'll be entering. And so we think it would be wise to, to give them a day where they're the only ones in there before the upper class comes back, uh, so they can get used to the school a little bit. And then finally, in Week 4, uh, Stage 4 would begin, um, as outlined for all of our students. And just to give you a, a little bit of a, an idea of what that might look like, um, uh, based on our recommendation dates, uh, whenever those might take place, this is when we would start, um, we would ask the board to take action. Uh, we have when our soft start would begin and when our full start would begin. So again, that would have, uh, with this timeline, that if we had made a recommendation tonight and the board had moved forward, we would have been starting our soft start on February 3rd, which would have been in alignment with the, um, semester. Uh, that looks like that's gonna have to shift a little bit. And if the board approves, uh, of, of Dr. Haas's recommendation, um, when the metrics are right, we would inform the board and come back with a recommendation for Stage 4. And so we would be happy to take, um, take questions or, uh, hear any comments from the board members about this. And what we would, uh, i- if it's the will of the board, um, we would look for a, a motion to approve Dr. Haas's recommendation of a flexible, uh, schedule for making his recommendation for Stage 4.
Uh, Dr. McLaughlin, I have a comment slash question. I, I think there were a lot of, uh, people making comments tonight that didn't understand the flexible schedule. What we're really talking about is decoupling, it's a word of the night, but decoupling the decision points from the nine-week grading period to possibly and tying it to conditions in the, in the community. It's not that every week we will decide what stage we're in at all, which is, I think, the misunderstanding that some people had based on that chart.
Yeah, Dr. Jacob, that, that's correct. And I, and I think there was also some confusion, uh, when we announced the move to Stage 1, because what we're planning to do the earliest, we want to make sure we have a couple of days of lead time, uh, before we move back to Stage 3. And so we, while we've committed to these next two weeks, um, at Stage 1, if the health metrics allow, on Wednesday, uh, January 27th, we could make a recommend, we could say, hey, we're gonna pivot back to Stage 3, because things have, have changed in the community and we're gonna, um, bring kids back on that Monday. What the, what the message, the intent of the message was to say, if it's not on that Wednesday, then we'll make an announcement that Wednesday saying, hey, we're not, we're gonna stay in Stage 1. And then the following Wednesday, we would review the metrics again and make another announcement. Hey, the metrics have, have gone down and we can come back the next week, or, um, or we're gonna need to stay there because of the, the community health, uh, where we stand.
I think I'm now more confused than I was, so.
And so, and so that, I think that comment doesn't have anything to do with Stage 4, because Dr. Haas will need to come before the board with a recommendation for Stage 4. Um, uh, but if the, but when the metrics allow, I think, I believe Dr. Haas has the ability to say, we're ready to go back into Stage 3, the stage that we left when our automatic trigger hit.
I have, um, some comments as well. One, I, what, I guess the comment I would want to make is just, I think at this point, any decision to move into Stage 4 should be tied somewhat to a vaccination. If we have a vaccination on the horizon that we think our teachers will be able to have access to, potentially within, like, two weeks of the, the starting date, at, at this point, I wouldn't be comfortable sending anyone back to the school unless we had at least offered them a vaccination that had declined or they, I don't know. That's something that is a factor now in my mind, because we have a, a timeline for when the vaccinations are gonna roll out. And then to speak to Kate's point, it's like your head kind of starts spinning listening to that. And what I heard from some of those parents and what I've experienced is just so much fluctuation in what we're doing. It is almost impossible to stay on top of it. So- So when you arrange childcare, literally the next week, the plan has changed. I myself, even as a board member, felt frustration when um we had to move down to stage one and we had data that didn't look like it was moving in the right direction. And we were a week out from going back to stage three and and I I asked, is are is this, are we doing this? Are we going to stage three? I think a lot of parents had the same question. It was like, yeah, we're doing it. And literally five days later, we're back to stage one. That's a whole different, you know, it's so at this point, I guess I'm starting to to summarize my points, even even question what we're doing. We're getting close to the end of the school year, vaccinations are around this corner. I'm almost feel like just saying, I think my my mom's my mom's actually sitting right next to me. Um, I think they just gave their teachers a date, you know, March fifteenth, and then we can uh analyze it at at this time and 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 see where we're going. Because I'm not gonna lie, I I've been I've been paying attention. And when you're talking about this week, we'll look at here, we'll re do it the next week. And if it drops back down, it might, I I it's confusing. It's hard to get. So my comments for what they're worth.
There are other.
I wanted to.
Have we done any any consideration of the fact? I mean, one of the things that concerns me is that we're gonna have, I think the goal is to have, when we can get them to have the vaccinations pushed through as quickly as possible. Anecdotally, I have a a number of friends in the medical fields who've been inoculated, who were knocked out for a couple of days. Do we have a provision for if we have a large number of our employees who are gonna be out? Because my understanding is it can give you, it it doesn't feel real good to have the have the shot.
One of the things that we've worked hard on this year is making sure that we have enough people to cover um classes and things like that. So obviously, we would go to that core first if we if we really needed people. That 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 metric of do we have the staff to be able to uh to go into a stage? I think also would apply if we hadn't, if we had uh so many staff members that were not able to come in, we might have to look at another alternative. But I I think that based on what we're seeing now and what we know now, I'm I'm anticipating that we will be able to have the staff to support our students.
And just to clarify my thoughts, it's kinda hard to talk when I have the headphones. It's like an echo, so you end up listening to yourself and thinking about what you just said instead of. But just to clarify, Matt, I am in agreement with you not making a recommendation today, because if we made it today, based on the data, it would be to to stay in stage one. So there has to be some sort of flexibility, I guess, just when anticipating the scheme for how we're gonna make that decision, I would prefer a more concise, just let's move it to X date in the end of March, wherever, you know, whatever it is, I don't know, like, that's when we know we're gonna have vaccinations or whatever, I guess, just for clarity's sake for the public, but I don't know how others feel.
Well, and I would um, I what I would say is that our posture has been to bring the kids in when we can. That's also been the guidance from the governor's office and the Virginia Department of Education. So certainly, as a as a parent of of a child in the school system, the the fluctuation from one time to another, I'm I'm sure it can be disruptive. However, this week, we were able to have, we were able to have our elementary school students who wanted to come into the schools be able to come into school. Uh, that's not the case for next week and um and the week after. However, that's the posture that we've had is that providing that choice for the families who want it to have their children in the school and the teachers who are going into the schools to be able to do that. Um, it's each, you know, the direction from the Virginia Part of Education, which I I agree with, is that we should take every inch we can get to bring children into schools who want to be there for their academic health, their mental health, their well being, that um I I do not disagree, especially being a parent of a teenager, that um this uh this isolated time for many of our children, uh, the small ones, the the middle aged students, the high school students has had a traumatic impact on them. Um, so I I will abide certainly as the superintendent who takes direction from the board uh with whatever decision you make. I personally think, uh, based on my understanding and the um, the um inconsistencies in the rollout of the vaccination, the real issues that are taking place with vaccinating that saying that we would not bring the children in and not give the families the choice to bring their children in uh if they want it until we have all of our employees having both rounds of the vaccination. I I I personally, as the superintendent, would not make that recommendation. I would accept whatever direction I receive from the board. Uh, however, I think that um that would be too long from now for the for the families that really want the choice to be able to bring their children in. Again, we're not forcing families to make that decision. We're putting it out there and saying it's available. And if you want to do it, you can do it. Um, and I think that uh coming back off the holiday season, many of us are reeling from the staggering numbers that we see. And it's a, it's more of a commentary on uh our society's willing to com- willingness to comply with mitigation strategies for the benefit of our children and the benefit of our community. However, it has impacted everybody's view on on what we're capable of doing in the schools. And um, I don't know if Mr. McKay is still here. However, what we're hearing from the Blue Ridge Health District is that regardless and in spite of what is going on out in the community, that schools are the safest place for children to be when they're not in their home. And as you heard earlier from uh our uh vice president from the YMCA, we have many, many children going to other places besides school uh to to uh participate in their educational program. So um, I still think, or otherwise I wouldn't have recommended it, that giving us the flexibility to come back to you as a board to look at the data, look at where we are and not tie it to a nine weeks and not tying it to a specific vaccination date is a better strategy, because we really should be taking advantage of every opportunity we can to give the families that choose to have their children come into the schools to be allowed to do that. That's, again, that's my uh, I wanna say educated opinion, but it's my professional opinion on on what we should be doing. Um, I'm I'm gonna step back.
I I agree with you, Matt. And and my 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 reasoning on that is specifically that and I hear it for for some of the kids, the it it can be chaotic to have an up or down, a close and open. I get that. It's like snow days on steroids. But the al- the alternative for that is for the for the families who just, hey, look, my child can't handle that inconsistency is virtual learning. It's they don't have to do hybrid. And so so if I I get it, it, you know, for for my family, I I chose virtual, because I did not think that hybrid was the best thing for my child. But it was my choice, and I'm glad I had was given the opportunity to have that choice. And so I think I think we need to be as as responsive and as mobile as we can be. This is a moving target. It's gonna be a moving target through probably July. And I think we need to give ourselves the ability to be flexible so that we can meet meet things where they are, not where we anticipate they're gonna be six weeks from now.
I agree with that for um the nine week marking periods. I I do agree with being flexible, trying to get into stage four, but I do think it is a stress on some of our most vulnerable populations, whose hours may be determined two weeks in advance to go week to week. So I just think, you know, thinking about caregivers who have, you know, who don't have a flexibility, but who want their children in school. Uh, you know, we don't, we're not doing it day to day, right? Because we recognize that that would be too disruptive. So we chose week to week. And so I think that, you know, I would urge you to reconsider the week to week, because I think that that's too small, too short of a period.
Ms. Lee, we're not planning on doing week to week. Uh, and I take full responsibility. I signed off on that communication. But I went back and read it after I heard the pub- public comments tonight, because I was like, wait a minute, that's not what we said. However, when I read the communication, I already knew all the information, so it made sense to me what it said. We're, we are not recommending making a week to week uh decision. What what we're saying is, right now, we're in stage one, and we're not gonna make a decision on a Friday to come back on a Monday or on a Tuesday to come back to stage three on a Wednesday. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna look at it on Wednesday, and then for the next week, we're gonna say, okay, we're gonna come back to stage three. That is independent of making a recommendation to go into stage four. I apologize. I wanna apologize to everyone, because when I read, when I went back and I read that communication um tonight, yeah, as I, after I heard the comments from the speakers, I was like, well, no wonder they, that's what they think, because if if you read it and you don't have all the background information that we've been talking about, that's what you're, that's what you would see.
But what I'm still hearing from you is that you're deciding on Wednesday for the next week. So that still does to me, read as week to week.
Just for coming back, just like, we just didn't wanna like say, so we said for a minimum of two weeks, we'll stay in stage one. And then we'll, so as we get to the end of that second week, we'll make a call and let everybody know ahead of time that we're, we're either gonna stay in stage one or come in for stage three. And if we stay in stage one, then the next Wednesday, we'll make a call. That's uh, that's what that's all about. That's not about um making a recommendation for stage four.
No, I'm not talking about making a recommendation for stage four. I'm just talking about the kids who are in stage three, who are in school.
Right.
Whose caregivers have to figure out, okay, do I have childcare for this next week? Or do I not? What is my school, what is my work schedule? All, I'm I'm just talking about that. And it is confusing, because I know that we're truly, you're truly trying to get the um recommendation resolution, um, which I I do support that. But I'm just saying, uh, sometimes that flexibility of going of thinking of things week to week, just within the three to one is harder for parents and caregivers who have less flexible jobs. And I know that we have a lot of those. And, you know, they're our most vulnerable students.
I hear, I totally hear what you're saying. We could, we can, we can adjust that. I I told, I get it. I I get what you're saying. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you would mind, I um, I don't wanna stop the conversation at all, but I'd just like to put a motion on the on the uh, on the table so that we can then come back after a second and finish up the conversation. And I would move that um, we allow a flexible schedule for Dr. Haas that doesn't tie him and his team to the nine week schedule we approved back uh in the fall uh for making recommendations to the board for mov- moving on to stage four.
We've heard here a second to Miss Alcarro's uh motion. This is the motion that was shown in the uh, in the presentation that we just uh did observe. So is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, Ms. Osborne.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion or any further discussion?
I guess I'd I'd I would just, I guess, wanna say again that I think what I was hearing from speakers, but it sounds like other people were hearing different things, was that it feels like it's week to week, even if that's not the been the implication, because, you know, this week, we're in stage three, next week, we're in stage one, the week after that is stage one, the week after that is stage three, the week before that was stage one, and the week before that was the holiday, you know, it's just, it has in practice been a change every, almost every week. Um, and I don't want that to keep happening, I guess. But I can also appreciate that you wanna get students in as quickly. So I guess what I would ask, I'm certainly happy to give you flexibility. I also wanna get students in. And for me, I guess, just because the vaccination's changes my thinking just a little bit in that uh, I do think we should have some kind of policy in place. I'm, I did not say, Matt, that it has to be all staff before anyone comes back to school. I mean, I'm happy in the stage we're in right now. But I certainly think that I would feel very uncomfortable sending like an elderly teacher or an at risk teacher back to school when there's vaccinations that are literally, you know, weeks away. So I don't know how you can factor that into your decision making. I mean, I trust your educated opinion about it, but um, but I would want it to be something that's considered.
We could definitely figure that out. There's gotta be a way to figure it out.
And maybe just another point, too, from the time that you make the recommendation to us until the time that stage four would be implemented, would be pretty close to three to four weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's a pretty big time gap in between those two dates.
It's a good stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I totally uh, now that you need my uh affirmation, Ms. Carlson, but yeah, it's been a yo yo here recently, and that wasn't the intention, but I fully acknowledge that it's been an up and down for for our families.
Any further discussion? All right. If not, Ms. Johnston, could you take a roll call?
Sure. Ms. Carlson. Yes. Mr. Oberg.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Dr. Akov.
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion passed.
The motion passes unanimously. Next item, and there might be good news here. Our next item was uh Department of Human Resources's annual report. And Dr. Haas, do you have a a comment or a statement to make on that?
I heard a past tense was.
Well, that was actually for you, Mr. Page.
Oh. I'll take credit for this.
I know it's tough being the chair and you're, it's your first, you know, meeting of the twenty twenty one year, so.
Right, it is, it is. But uh, we will defer this item until our next meeting. But Ms. Law, Ms. Jerome is here.
Right.
Wow, okay. Ms. Jerome, would you mind coming back at a later meeting to give this report?
Of course not. I'd be delighted to. My team's several, my team are here, but we we would like to do it when you are are at uh, at your best attention. And and I know it's been a long evening.
Okay, well, I'll make this more democratic. Um, Ms. Johnston, could you call uh the roll call? And then we'll hear from each board member whether you wanna proceed to this item or whether we wanna uh defer it to another time. So, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Lee.
Uh, I I just have a question. Uh, are we having this special meeting next week, since we're not voting on anything?
I'm pretty sure we can uh postpone or really uh not have that meeting, because we don't have a recommendation to talk about. Our next scheduled meeting would be January twenty eighth.
Okay, um, yes.
So yes, what? You wanna hear the report tonight or you wanna defer it?
Oh, sorry. Um, I'm happy to defer it. I read it, but I'm happy to defer it.
Okay. All right.
Okay, um, Ms. Carlson.
When you were making the decision, I was, I was happy about it. However, if we're already here and it's fifteen minutes and they have sat and waited the whole meeting to to give it, I I'm willing to just listen to it. Sorry, I am excited to have it presented to me now while I'm here.
Okay, next.
Mr. Oberg.
I I I I, my attention span is limited at this point. I'm willing to be here, and I really appreciate the fact that the HR people stayed. But I will be honest, my attention span is limited.
I need to hear yes or no.
I pass.
Passing is not it. Yes, no, you options.
I don't care. I I same.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Osborne.
Out of respect to the HR staff, I would like to go ahead and hear it.
Mr. Alcarro.
I'd like to go ahead.
Dr. Akov.
I'd like to go ahead. I don't know if we can arrange to have thirty five public commenters before they they go next time, so.
Okay.
And this.
That takes care of it. It would be four to three at le- I mean, that's enough, so we'll.
So let's stop talking about it. Let's go.
So we'll take the report. Thank you, Ms. Jerome and your team for being here with us almost now past time, so.
Thank you. Uh, you know, it's not so bad when we're not uh, in the auditorium, I have to confess. So we do appreciate this opportunity to share a few highlights uh, from our annual report. Uh, Lorna Jerome, Director of Human Resources. As you know, and hopefully have had the chance to review, this report has information about our workforce. Our employees are critical to attaining our mission and our equity mission. The human resources team's work is centered around hiring, keeping, developing, and supporting a diverse and inclusive and engaged workforce. Uh, we provide this report and detailed demographic information on our employees shows historical trends as well as highlights of some of the initiatives of the human resources team. This evening, I'm going to share two major areas of focus for us this year. Our support of the COVID-19 pandemic and highlights of our equity and inclusion work. Uh, Dr. Daphne Kaiser, our Director of Educator Quality is here this evening also. She has played a key role in the HR equity work. Mr. Brody Downs, our Assistant Director of Human Resources, will cover some information that shows the impact of COVID-19 on our hiring and applicant pools. And Ms. Dana Robb, the Program Manager for Compensation and Rewards, will share a couple slides on compensation, previewing some information that you will uh, hear more about later in January in the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors. I know that sounds like a lot, but we're covering it uh, at a pretty high level. So we'll be able to move quickly and certainly will answer any questions you have about the report or the information we share. So just to give a little context, Human Resources does share information to the board uh, several times throughout the year. June and September, we provide updates on our teacher and hiring uh, for that particular, that upcoming school year. In October, there's the joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors on compensation and benefits. And then either in December or January, we come to you with this report, which again, provides information on our workforce demographics and human resource initiatives. And then in March, we come to you with some staffing and reduction in force information. So, next slide, please. So, Human Resources provided support to our employees, our administrators, and leadership related to much of the COVID work. Uh, there was a new leave that uh, the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act that we interpreted and communicated to our employees. We provided resources to help our managers manage in a virtual environment, provided a lot of support with the return to school initiatives. We had to train our substitutes differently, not just on uh, uh, the regular things, but on how to access Zoom and the COVID protocols. We recognized how challenging uh, these times are for our employees and communicated widely our employee assistance plan, which provides uh, free counseling to employees and their family members. Uh, as we saw our usage increase, we increased the number of visits uh, that employees and their family members could, could have had through that plan. And we really focused intentionally through our wellness program or Be Well, not to just provide communications and resources on physical health, but more so on mental health throughout this year. And then a significant effort um, has been um, made by Human Resources staff to comply with um, the occupational health and safety training and the whole infection control uh, exposure reporting and guidance. This has been very high-touch. So when employees and managers have questions about exposures or possible exposures, there's a number they can call. Um, we've hired some temporary staff members to help with this work, but I think it's been really, really critical to our staff. Uh, Lea Knox, our, our Program Manager for Wellness and Safety, has led this work, partnered very closely with Ms. Eileen Gomez. So these bullets really don't tell the story of the significant effort in, in so many different ways. Um, uh, the HR team has really pivoted and focused on this, this COVID work this year. Next slide, please. The other major area of focus has been our work around equity and inclusion. We formed a team, uh, equity team uh, with collaboration with uh, Dr. Hairston's staff and developed goals. Our goals: recruit and retain high-quality, diverse staff, increase the number of minority teachers to better represent the minority student percentages in our schools, identify best practices that support diverse instructional staff, and develop and promote inclusive policies and procedures that are consistent with the work of the Anti-Racism Policy Committee. Much of the work has been self-reflection for the HR team. Uh, we've also used a uh, assessment cool tool called the TOCA. It's transforming, transforming organizational culture assessment. And this has really allowed us to look at some of our policies and, and practices through a different lens. Um, we have, uh, the next slide, I'll, I'll talk about some of those initiatives. So again, we've applied the equity lens on HR processes and structures. For example, job descriptions, interview questions, and this annual report. Uh, we did, the equity team did look at this report and we've provided additional demographic information to you. We plan to conduct focus groups to hear feedback from current and former teachers of color about their specific experiences at Albemarle County. We're meeting with administrators to discuss school demographics and the focus of the school division and board regarding minority hiring and retention. We plan to launch an engagement survey this spring to get some baseline data. We haven't done an engagement survey in a number of years, um, particularly on how our minority employees feel about working at Albemarle County. This will allow us to really focus our efforts. And then a, a new uh, requirement, newly hired teachers will be required um, to uh, either receive a micro credential or the certification as a culturally responsive teacher through um, in the first three years um, of their hire. So we are excited about that. So a number of things we're doing to align with uh, equity inclusion work. And now I'm going to turn it over to um, Mr. Brody Downs.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Brody Downs, Assistant Director for uh, Human Resources. Um, the inner report uh, provides uh, important recruitment, retention, and staffing and demographic information. Uh, but given the school division's COVID response efforts, i- it just really felt prudent to communicate additional information that reflects just a few of the challenges we've seen uh, since the beginning of the pandemic. Specifically, uh, we focused on hiring and recruitment in 2020. Uh, you'll see on this slide uh, that we experienced reductions in our hiring in 2020. Uh, beginning with teachers, it is important to note that a vast majority of our uh, hiring occurs in preparation for the upcoming school year. Therefore, when we analyzed the 2020 data, uh, we did review um, teacher, or teaching hiring trends in uh, two ways. Um, hiring done in preparation uh, of the school year and hiring completed after the school year has started. Uh, we refer to the latter as um, mid-year, uh, mid-year hiring. Hiring in preparation for this, uh, for the current school year was roughly one-third less compared to the prior two years. Uh, mid-year hiring doubled compared to two years ago and was marginally higher than last school year. Uh, similarly, hiring for operations support staff also decreased significantly in 2020. We pulled hiring data for um, the positions of bus driver, custodian, and child nutrition. Uh, the school division hired on average eighty-five percent fewer bus drivers compared to the prior two years, and nearly half of the custodians that we've hired in the previous two years. Since the start of the pandemic, we've hired zero child nutrition staff. Uh, next slide, please. So next we turn to recruitment trends. Um, and it's important to note the number of applications received for any given teaching vacancy uh, varies greatly depending on uh, the time of the year the position was posted, uh, the subject matter or endorsement area, uh, the length of the posting, the grade level, uh, et cetera. And we pulled data for four to five vacancies for three different elementary schools posted in similar times of the year for similar durations of time. Um, in other words, we did our best to pull a sample size that would be the best apples-to-apples comparison. So looking at applicants for vacancies prior to the start of the school year, we observed a seventy-two percent reduction compared to last year. And shifting to vacancies posted after the start of the school year, the school division uh, always observes significantly reduced number of applications for vacancies posted after the start of any school year. A sample size of the same three elementary schools indicated that 2020 was no different from other years. We observed single-digit numbers of applications. Again, I do want to emphasize that this data is a sample size uh, but illustrative of the 2020 uh, teacher recruitment trends. So next we look at recruitment trends for operations supports, uh, services, staffing positions. And again, we looked at data for the positions of bus driver, uh, custodian, and child nutrition. Uh, we observed roughly a sixty-five percent decrease in bus driver applications, a little more than a fifty percent decrease in custodian applications, and roughly a forty-five percent decrease in child nutrition applicants, each compared to the prior two years. Um, so we will, of course, uh, continue to monitor these trends going forward, uh, as our efforts to prepare for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year are already underway, which is very, very, very wild to think. Um, I'm going to now turn it over to our Program Manager for Compensation and Rewards, Dana Robb.
Good evening, Dana Robb, Program Manager of Compensation and Rewards. Um, one of our greatest disappointments this year was the um, inability to implement our salary increases or increase the minimum pay rate due to the pandemic. As you know, compensation can affect staffing through our ability to recruit and retain our employees. On January 28th, we will be coming before the Joint Board to review compensation for the coming year. And there is additional information on our, um, what we did in the past um, year in the school annual report. Next slide, please, Daphne. This slide um, is to show how we compare um, for our teacher compensation to our adopted market and more specifically, the adjacent localities that touch Albemarle County. These include City of Charlottesville and the counties of Buckingham, Augusta, Buckingham, Plavanna, Green, Louisa, Nelson, Orange, and Rockingham. As you can see, while we are exceeding our targets, it is very by a very slim margin for new hire teachers at step zero in particular. As you'll see on the next slide, some divisions are putting resources towards new hire salary at step zero. Next slide, please. This slide is the breakdown of the localities that touch Albemarle County. So as you can see, um, we are um, meeting our target, but it's just by the slim margin. And um, we do see that there are trends that our localities are placing more funds at that zero step to attract new hires. Next slide, Daphne. This slide details our classified compensation for our, the minimum full-time hourly pay rate that the localities that are adjacent to us pay for their employees, for their classified employees. And our classified employees, of course, include bus drivers, custodians, food service aides, maintenance, uh, our teacher assisting, our teaching assistants as well. This slide is the breakdown of the adjacent localities and is the minimum hourly pay rates for full-time employees. As you can see, our minimum pay rate is lower than five of the localities in the chart. And in comparison to the median of all nine of these localities, we are still low. And that is their consideration for when we will bring some more additional information to you at the Joint Board meeting about our strategy for increasing our minimum pay rate and also talk about, more about compensation for both our teachers and our classified staff. I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Jerome.
Thank you. So I will wrap up with a, a summary of, of some of our work going forward. Next slide, please. So we will continue to provide support related to COVID-19, um, working with, on the team uh, delivering the vaccines. We are continuing with our Cronos timekeeping, electronic timekeeping implementation. Um, as you know, we have um, implemented for all regular employees. Uh, we, we still have temporary employees and substitutes to, to bring onto the system. Continue that equity focused personnel policy review and revision. And as Ms. Robb mentioned, um, focus on the salary and benefit programs, market competitiveness, uh, particularly looking at um, increasing that minimum starting salary. Um, future initiatives, I've mentioned some of these, the focus groups and the engagement survey. Did want to mention that um, we will be sharing the engagement survey results with you. Um, we don't have a specific timeline exactly of when we're going to roll it out, but you will hear more about that. Um, we'll be doing anti-racism policy training for new hires. And I, I've mentioned the uh, culturally responsive teaching learning requirement. We're also um, uh, on a team that's implementing the learning management system, which will allow our teachers to better track their registered certifications. It's a really a, a self-serve-for certification. So we're excited about that. And one thing I, I did want to mention related to the equity is you may have noticed in the uh, Personnel Action uh, reports that you receive on the board meeting, there's now a dashboard that you can track the demographic information on our teachers. So you don't have to wait for this once-a-year report that we bring to you or our hiring updates. You can track it on every, every board meeting. So again, I, I know we've moved quickly, uh, but we did want to provide these highlights for you and answer any questions.
Do we have any questions from any board members?
Not a question, just a comment. It clearly um, Charlottesville went ahead with their minimum wage increase to fifteen dollars. And um, it will be very difficult for us to compete with both the university and the city at ten dollars and twenty cents an hour. So I hope we'll be able to do something this year.
I agree, Lorna. Um, this presentation is great. I know that y'all, y'all made some changes and added things and um, it's, I appreciated. But that slide, Kate, with the, the direct comparison to our surrounding counties and we're, we're doing terribly for um, our low-income workers. And then even for the first-year teachers, I, I knew we were below Charlottesville, but I'm surprised how small the margin is between us and the rural counties. If I was going to teach and there's only a five-hundred-dollar difference to teach in Albemarle, I'll just go live out in Louisa or Buckingham. There's cheaper houses and, and you're getting paid almost exactly the same. So that's very eye-opening. Definitely shows we need to do work there.
It'd be hard to improve our recruitment numbers with these salaries.
Great. Can I just ask one quick question uh, for clarification? So Lorna and Dana, if we, so uh, if we do, if we work on the zero, uh, zero-year salary, as the years move forward, does that move up the scale with them and impact the teachers hired behind them, too?
Yes.
And it impacts positively, right?
Yes. Remember, we made that change a few years ago. Remember, we used to really try to target it at the market and that.
Okay.
But now it's a, an even increase across the scale.
Because it's a straight scale. That's right. I, I forgot that was one of the unanticipated benefits of that. So if the board focused its efforts, if, if we have constraints and the board focused their efforts at the bottom, it would push to the top over time, along with, you know, of course, we'd want to address everybody up the scale with a, with a, with a pay increase. But if they also added an extra boost at the bottom and worked on that, it would keep finding its way up the scale, right?
Are you talking about a, a percentage increase or a dollar amount?
I don't want to, uh, I, I just, I think you answered the question. I, I was, I just was, wanted to be sure that if we attack the, the bottom of the scale, it would keep moving up with, with the people and impact the new teachers coming in behind them. All right.
Are there other questions?
Are there other questions? Okay, Ms. Jerome, Mr. Brody Davis, right? Ms. Robb and Dr. Casa. They, can't read my own writing here. Thanks so much for your presentation and we really hate that you had to wait an hour past the scheduled time to give it to us. But thanks so much for being here with us.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
All right, moving right along, other business, the board or the superintendent?
A shout out to our student rep. He sat.
Oh, okay. Right, okay.
Trial by fire.
Right, Angel, are you all right?
We said it, it would all be almost a level o'clock.
Is he still here?
Right now, he's going to bed.
Okay.
I do have, I do have one little, I don't know if it's information or business. As you know, I'm on the K-Tech board as are my Ms. Carlson and Ms. Osborne. And one of the things that I have had conversations today with Matt Haas, Stephanie Carter, who's the Director of K-Tech, and also Ross Holden is the idea, decoupling is my word of the night, is perhaps, historically, we, decisions at K-Tech have been tied to the, what happens at Albemarle County Public Schools. The underlying premise of K-Tech, however, is that it provides hands-on education for people in auto body or fire department, fire or, or whatever. And it is very, very difficult to do that all virtual. They had one week of Level 3 before the closure. And Ms. Carter has put together a schedule where only one quarter of the students would attend on a given day. We heard in our school board meeting, our K-Tech board meeting of October, from many of the students and the instructors, and I have, I would, I will be proposing to that board that we decouple the decision-making at K-Tech from that of county schools. They will still be required to work with the Health Department in terms of mitigation measures. But for some of, we are the only tech school in our region. No, there's one more that has not been on hybrid since the fall. Those students who signed up for K-Tech will not be able to get their state certifications unless they have some hands-on time. So, and most of them, many of them wouldn't have the option of continuing as an adult student to finish their certification. So this is more of an information or perhaps a request for feedback or blessing or, and I don't know. We have to also, of course, talk with the rest of the K-Tech board, which meets next Tuesday. I don't know if my colleagues on the board want to add anything.
I do think the K-Tech needs to be decoupled from what we've been doing.
They aren't coupled to the city schools? I mean, what's the relationship between city schools since they've been all virtual?
I, I'm concerned that we're having this conversation, this is a pretty big conversation, given that it's not on the agenda.
Well, I'm just, it's really information because in my conversation with Mr. Holden, and I don't know if he's still here, the K-Tech board actually has that authority to do that. So I don't know. I have not spoken with our colleagues on the city side. But it is something that may or may not work. But it is something that the Director of K-Tech, as well as the teaching staff, are very interested in, in the students in doing.
Okay.
I think it's our, our role that, at some point or in some way, to be supportive of whatever helps get our students and the students from Charlottesville, but our students, to get their certifications. And without the hands-on, if you, teaching or in-person teaching, you're right, they're, I mean, they're, they're going to suffer in that.
I did speak with Graham about this and he suggested I bring it up at other business. Blame, I'm, I'm hitting it to you, Mr. Page.
Okay, all right, but Mr. Oberg is saying that would be a K-Tech board decision, right?
Well, that, Ross, you want to clarify? This is a legal question I asked Ross, or I asked Ross earlier today.
Yeah, as you know, K-Tech is really a sort of joint venture between the Charlottesville Public Schools and Albemarle County Public Schools. It's governed by its own board. In fact, it was back in the meeting in October that the K-Tech board undertook a discussion and voted to open in a particular way that was different than the HTPS at that time. And this would be a very similar process. So I, knowing how K-Tech operates, I don't, not think we have to be joined at the hip with, with K-Tech. It's a totally different program and as I said, it is under the auspices and control of a different board.
Right, so our board wouldn't have to take any type of action at all on this. You were just bringing it to us for information, right?
As I understand.
As it does ultimately affect some of our Albemarle County students, of course.
I might just, maybe Ms. Smith would like to talk about, it does have some implications around transportation and some things that I would just want to make sure that you're aware of.
Yeah, I just want a small detail in it. I would caution, as part of that conversation, consider transportation. And I would caution on our ability to support transportation to it while we're in stage one. I'm not sure I would feel comfortable asking our drivers to do that.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay.
All right. I just have one, one quick, seriously quick thing. And that is, I forgot to mention it when we were doing our committee appointments, and that I would encourage the Chair and the Vice Chair to be using, making more use of subcommittees than we have in the past. So that I think more, some more efficient work can be done to the benefit of all members of the board if we assign two committees, subcommittees of two on various items that we need to dive into a little bit more. That's it.
Right, all right, thank you for that suggestion. Are there any other items from school board or superintendent?
I have nothing to add. Thank you, Mr. Page.
Okay. All right, so if not, then our board will stay in adjourned. And Angel, we are really sorry that you have, with the time schedule for tonight.
Good night, everybody.
My, our meeting is adjourned.